Today is Monday, September 9th, 2019. Councilwoman Obama, please.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Jim Henry. Mike Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifert. Jennifer Soder.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Kirda.
Here. If someone could just like, just take a look outside to make sure there's nobody outside that cannot get in and thinks there is not enough room to sit?
All clear.
All clear? Okay, thank you. There are a couple of, there are just a couple of things I'd like to take care of ahead of time. To, we have, we have the approval of the minutes for, for July 8th. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Obama, please.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
The minutes. Okay.
Yes. I was here.
Oh. Um, you were.
Okay, yes.
Mike Manzella.
Yes.
Jennifer Soder.
Yes.
Trudy Seifert. Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Barbara Kirda.
Yes. Okay, the next item I'd like to bring up has to do with a resolution that we have. I'd like to just bring those up forward prior to the presentations. The resolution is for 722, 724 Cookman Avenue. I think that there were some changes, minor changes, Jack?
Yes, I listened to the transcript of the hearing. Wanted to figure out about the conditions, the glass and the transom of the door, the steel, and whether or not there was a condition discussed or adopted by the board regarding blonding or anything of that nature, which there wasn't. I sent that email back in August, and now it's been corrected. That was sent to me today with the last spell of version.
Okay. Does anybody, does anybody on the board have any, any other modifications to that resolution? No? Okay.
Are you ready to have that resolution?
I do. And I've made the draft.
Yeah, and you know who to call.
Yes.
All right.
Motion?
Motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Councilwoman Obama, please.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jennifer Soder.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Barbara Kirda.
Yes. We have one other order of business that we had, we had sent out to the board, suggestions for the 2020 meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara, we have one more resolution.
Oh, we have one more? Okay. Which one?
1005, eliminating three, the extension.
Yeah, I submitted that in August. Okay.
Oh. Anybody have any, oh, I remember that.
If you don't have it, you can do it.
The next meeting.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Next meeting? If you don't mind? Okay. So we have one other item that we'd like to, the board was presented with the 2020 meeting, potential meeting dates. Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
I think yes.
Any, if you'd like to bring it to the, when do we have to have that finalized?
At the end of October.
The end of October, so we have until the next meeting, so please, everyone, check your calendars to make sure that the proposals work. And we've tried to make, to have at least two meetings a month, especially at the end of the year. We, we made sure that that, that happened, because sometimes we back up at the end of the year, so we did that. All right, so I'm going to ask the board to make sure that they take a look at that for the next meeting. So if we can have that on the agenda for the next meeting, then we're good to go. All right. One thing, one other thing that I'd like to bring up, and then I promise we can get started. This is like, for those of you, I don't know how many of you have been here or haven't been here for these presentations. I'd just like to clarify that during this application, the public does get a chance to ask questions. And what will happen is that we will have the professionals do their presentation, and the public is certainly allowed to ask questions on what was presented by that professional. That's where the questions have to stay, in that guide rails. And once again, as, if you've been here before, you know that if, if it's a repetitive question, I will ask you to move on. So please, be mindful, we have a lot of people here, we want to hear your questions, but please, keep it within the guardrails that, that we're allowed to have it in. So with that note, let's get started.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, just one second. There's something about Jennifer wasn't, wasn't here for one of the meetings, but she did listen to everything, so did she have that on record?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Jen, Jennifer, what meeting? You missed the August meeting?
The August meeting, yes.
August 12?
Yes. And I listened to the whole meeting on audio.
Okay, and I will prepare a certification for you the next time. As long as it's on the record that she's listened to, or either listened to the tapes or read the transcripts, she's eligible.
Okay. Let's go.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith, and I am the attorney for Asbury Partners. And for those of you who were not here previously, this is our fourth meeting. We've presented two witnesses so far, our architect Gary Handel and our civil engineer Sean Delaney. And I do always apologize to everyone that I'm speaking with my back to you. Tonight, we have our next witness, Thomas Bauer, who is our landscape architect. After that, we do have Mr. Hughes, our planner. If there's time, we will bring him up next. So I'd like to start by swearing in, having Mr. Bauer sworn in.
Yes, I do. My name is Thomas Bauer, B-A-U-E-R.
Mr. Bauer, I know you've been here at the board before, but for the record, can you please describe your qualifications, your education, your licensing?
Sure. I'm a principal and founding principal of the landscape architectural firm of Malaloan Bauer Associates. We're located in Buriel, New Jersey, and Jersey City, New Jersey. I am a graduate of Penn State University with a degree in landscape architecture, Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture, a past president of the New Jersey American Society of Landscape Architecture, and I am a fellow in the ASLA organization nationally.
And Mr. Bauer, you've testified in front of this board previously, is that correct?
Yes, numerous times.
I'd like to offer Mr. Bauer as an expert in the field of landscape architecture.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, we've had several exhibits before, so I'm going to, before you start, mark this. First one is A32, which I think is the next one in the series. Can you describe A32, and also generally describe the landscaping that is proposed here on the property?
Certainly, be happy to. Good evening, everyone. The plan that we're looking at on the screen before us is, is a rendered version of sheet L1 that was submitted as part of our planning board submission package. The, the only change to the plan from the submission is the color that is on it, for purposes of highlighting the landscape. So I'll focus, if we look at the, the overall plan, let me orient you first, the, to the top of that plan is Ocean Avenue, and Jen will, will highlight with the mouse here a little bit. That is Ocean Avenue, you see some of the angle parking on Ocean Avenue. There is the Ocean Avenue sidewalk as well, which consists of a four-foot band of red concrete pavers with some site features, site amenities, benches, lights, bicycle racks. There is the balance of the walkways, a concrete scored sidewalk. To the bottom of the plan is, is the boardwalk area, proposed boardwalk. That is technically to the east, to the south, or plan left, is an existing concrete sidewalk that borders our, our beach club. And then to the north of the site, as Jen is pointing out, is a proposed concrete sidewalk that will be added, so that we have two access points from Ocean Avenue to the boardwalk for pedestrian circulation. So back to Ocean Avenue, again, I mentioned that we have benches and bicycle racks. Today, there is one bench on Ocean Avenue that is just about directly in front of what will be the entrance to our beach club, and there is, there are two bicycle racks, in addition to four streetlights that will amply light the, the entire pedestrian streetscape of Ocean Avenue. We are proposing to add one bike, one bench, and we are also relocating the one bench. So we show two benches, one, or both of them will be new locations. One of the bike racks is existing, and the other one will be relocated, again, due to its proximity to the entrance to the beach club. Jen will point out that there are stairs. Our beach club is about three feet, six inches above the sidewalk elevation to the finished floor of the beach club. So we're, we're providing access for a guest via stairs and a walkway. So the stairs are shown immediately in front of the doorway to the beach club. There are six risers, approximately six, seven inches apiece, so we are 42 inches in height. And then we have a walkway that is slightly sloped, less than 5% from Ocean Avenue up to that area as well. So we provide two means of, of access to our beach club. The edge of the landscape, the landscape is shown in the green tone across the entire frontage of the beach club. That area will be covered, it's, again, because of the 42 inches, we have a slope and grade from the base of the, of the beach club to the sidewalk. Along the sidewalk is a, is a steel curb as provide an edge to that, and then the slope will be covered with a naturalized dune grass, as you would see on a dune. Now, I have some images of the vegetation to show you what that would look like as we go forward. So the primary ground cover for the entire slope is, is American beech grass or dune grass. We do have several trans, or several utilities on the site. We have a transformer on the north end within that green landscape area. That is your typical green box that we see on our sites today, and that, that transformer will be buffered. In addition to the dune grass, we're providing a taller ornamental grass called a calumagrossis that will buffer that, that transformer. To the south side of the, of the frontage, you will see a white box, as Jen is pointing out, that is a flush grate for a water meter pit. So that will just below grade, and it will be buffered and softened by the, the continuous dune grass that is in and around it. And then along the south side, adjacent to the building, in the, in the area that is up where the building is set back 18 inches from the sidewalk, there is one gas meter located there on that facade. So if we trace that line, Jen, from that south side, continuing along that facade and all the way across the facade of the building, and then turning again on the north side, is a cable system that will support a, a vine that will grow aggressively and soften the facade of the building. You've seen renderings of that from Gary Handel, our architect, I'll show you that rendering again, but that is a vine-covered trellis system, a cable trellis, if you will, and I'll show you some images of that. So that plant material is, is technically, botanical name is Linusera sempervirens, which means a coral honeysuckle. So it's a vine, previously, we had a different vine, and Mr. Sullivan had suggested, due to some issues with that vine, he wasn't as happy with it, so we changed it to one that we were in agreement with. It's a coral honeysuckle, it's a beautiful vine that flowers from the spring into middle of the summer, has a berry in the fall. It's a semi evergreen plant material in our climate, so it's a beautiful vine that will grow maybe five, six, seven, to even 10 feet on a good year, annually. So I will show you some more information concerning those plant material. In addition to that, the other vegetation that we have on site is all internal to the beach club. You'll see some sand in, in the area adjacent to the wood deck that wraps the pool. We have a calumagrossis grass that fronts that fence area, we have some roses, and then there is a, an ivy wall that is, as a backdrop to the outdoor bar as well. So that's, that's all internal to the beach club. Before we leave this graphic, let me just show you the, the section at the top, which I'll focus on a little bit more. I just wanted to make clear, I know that in the past, I understand that some people are confused about the elevation of the club in relation to the sidewalk. So as you can see here in cross-section, our sidewalk is to the right, and then 42 inches up higher is the, the landing that will access the beach club. We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that, Jen. So next, next slide. The next slide is going to be a photograph of the existing sidewalk as it exists today. You can see Ocean Avenue, the angle parking, as I mentioned, you can see the streetlights, there are a couple of bike racks and the, and the bench. So again, we're relocating one of the bike racks and one of the benches, and we are adding a second bench. So that sidewalk will look, as it does today, it will look that way at the end of the project as well. To the right is where we will have a steel curb along that edge of the sidewalk, and then we'll have the slope that goes up 42 inches to the base of the building.
And for the, for the record, I'm going to mark this photograph as A33.
A33, that's fine. And by the way, the, the entrance to our club is just about at the beginning, the lower portion of this photograph is just about where we are, where the entrance to our beach club will be, and that's the reason for relocating some of these amenities, so that we had some open space for general circulation at the base of the stairs to access the, the beach club.
The next one, which we will mark is A34.
A34 is a rendering that you have seen previously. This is the front elevation of, of the beach club, as, as seen from Ocean Avenue, you can see the angle parking, you can see the streetscape that I just described. What is not shown in here are the benches and bike racks, but they, they will be there. The arch represents the opening to the beach club. You can see right in front of, of that arch are a series of stairs. That's the, the six risers that I mentioned that will take us up, the seven-inch risers to get up to the elevation, and then hidden by the dune grass to the left is where that walkway will go, from that landing down to the sidewalk in that area. It's a very gentle slope, as I mentioned, less than 5%. Also out there, I didn't point out in the plan, we have, we're adding additional bicycle racks, four more racks that are a ribbon rack style that you've seen on other projects in town, seven bicycles per rack for a total of an additional 28 bicycles that will be able to be parked along Ocean Avenue. Again, this, the vine that you're looking at here will be the coral honeysuckle. It is shown in its evergreen fashion, there are no flowers shown on it, although the flower itself is a coral with a yellow, a beautiful yellow centerpiece to it, and I've mentioned it has berries in the fall. So it's very attractive to birds, very popular for birds and, and bees as well, which is all positive. Okay?
Okay.
Next slide? Yeah, let me point out here, the entrance to the, to the building, what we have added here previously, as you know, we had a ground-mounted sign that said Asbury Park Beach Club with the address of 1500 Ocean Avenue, and we modified that to put that, we took that sign out of the ground-mounted landscape and put it with a vinyl-adhered, glass-mounted letter style on the entrance. So just to the left, in white letters, you can see it says very subtly, Asbury Park Beach Club, 1500 Ocean Avenue.
We'll mark, we'll mark this one as A35.
And this is an image of the plan, what this is, again, part of, this was on L2, detail three on L2 that was submitted, that is a detail reflecting that graphic image. So a view of the front of the building, steps going up to the front doors, the arch, and then the signage to the left.
And we'll mark that one as A36.
Okay. And again, just, just for clarification, again, just because I think there was, I was told there was some confusion about this, so let me, just a closer look at the stairs and the walkway that access the, the, the front door of the beach club from the sidewalk. You can see the steps going from the beach club down to the sidewalk and the ramp, and if you look closely, you'll see contours 14, 13, and 12 going down that sidewalk. So it's coming up at three and a half feet from, from the street level up to the boardwalk, up to the beach club, excuse me.
We'll mark this one A37 that you just described.
And then you'll see the contours as well going through that landscape, representing the slope from the finished elevation of the building down to the sidewalk. Next slide, Jen?
This one would be A38.
And again, this one just represents a closer look at that cross-section, representing the 42-inch grade change from the, from finished floor down to the sidewalk. And here, you can see that there is some steel curbing as an edge to the landscape, so everything is properly contained within that slope. And then there will be the dune grass across the entire slope of the, of the landscape.
Focusing on that dune grass, I'll turn to the next picture, which will mark A39.
So this is a typical photograph of dune grass, it's American beech grass, which is indigenous to the area, obviously, and, and it grows very well, and will be a very attractive streetscape elevation to the beach club. So this will be continuous, and it will populate, be planted probably on an eight-to-10 inch spacing initially, and cover the, that entire slope quite nicely, and provide a very nice aesthetic to the front of the beach club.
Okay.
The next slide is the calumagross, I mentioned the grass that we are using inside of the, the, the beach club along the fence area, as well as a buffer to the transformer that is on the north, northwest corner of the site. So this is an ornamental grass, it's very attractive, it's tall, about four feet high, so it will properly buffer that transformer.
And we'll mark the picture of this plant as A40. Next, we'll turn to this one, we'll mark as A41.
And the next one, this A41 is a detailed photograph of the coral honeysuckle, again, Linusera sempervirens. I mentioned it's a semi evergreen in our climate zone. South of us, it's, actually slightly south of us, it's entirely evergreen, so given a good year, a good warm winter, it could even remain evergreen entirely all through the, all through the winter. It has a beautiful flower, it's a coral color, reddish coral color with a yellow centerpiece, and as I mentioned, berries in the fall. Its growth habit, I know everyone's interested in how fast does it grow, properly fertilized and planted properly and irrigated properly, and it's protected from the ocean winds and salt, it could easily grow seven, eight, 10 feet annually. So will be an aggressive vine, so within several years, three, four years, we could have full growth of this vegetation across the front of the building facade, is what we anticipate.
Okay, now I'll turn to it.
Yep, next one is number?
A41.
A41. So this, this coral honeysuckle is a twining vine, and it will be mounted on a, it will be climbing a cable system. This is an example, I use this photograph simply to show you the, the type of cable system that we will be installing. It's a simple stainless steel cable that is secured top and bottom, and that the vine will twine up and be aggressively covering the building. The next slide is a little bit more of detail, which will be A42?
42.
42. So this just shows, again, just indicative-
Oh, I'm sorry, did we miss one?
So A42 is the-
Oh, sorry, A41 is the coral honeysuckle, A42 is the example of the cable system, and so this next one is A43, thank you.
A43 is an indication of the mounting hardware for how the cable will be supported to the building. Against a wood facade building, we'll project the, the cable out of 12 inches from the building facade, and this is how it will be supported, and, and then the vines will twine up that cable from that point. So the vine, there are different kinds of vines, some vines are, are attached to buildings, like an English ivy or a Boston ivy, that kind of thing will attach. This will not attach, it's just twined, so it's going to be off the entire facade of the building.
So now we'll go to A44, can you describe what this is?
Yep, A44 is a graphic indication of a young vine, as it starts its growth pattern, and you can see how it's twining up the cable very nicely, and then the next slide shows it in more of a mature growth pattern, or growth timeframe. You can see the vine is more mature, but still twining up the, up the vine.
And so we'll mark the more mature one as A45.
Very good. And the vine will be managed, the vine will be managed as necessary and pruned accordingly as, as necessary through proper maintenance. Irrigation will also be maintained properly. We have an irrigation system that will ensure that all of this is watered properly, it will be a drip, an automatic drip irrigation system set at the proper time, given the proper climate and time of year.
All right, our next one is A46, can you describe what this is?
A46 is a close-up of the plan that, that is at the Ocean Avenue, at, I want to show this graphic to indicate for you the bicycle, additional bicycle racks that I mentioned. As you can see, the four vertical lines to the, to the right of that plan, each one of those will support seven bicycles, so an increase of 28 bicycles to be provided along Ocean Avenue. Which is great, and that's in addition to the bicycle, the other racks that are on the street as well. And this is the ribbon rack, this is a photograph of the ribbon rack that we did at the Asbury Hotel, so you're familiar with it, how it works, what it looks like, it'll be similar to, identical to this, although a little bit larger to support more bicycles.
We'll mark that exhibit of the ribbon rack as A47.
So all in all, we have, I think, a very simple, yet attractive and, and very aesthetically pleasing landscape for the beach club.
Now, Mr. Bauer, I'd like to turn your attention to the engineering letter that we received just this week. There you go, all right, I have a letter marked September 4th, 2019, from Insight Engineering, which is the board's engineering firm. Have you reviewed this letter?
I have, yes.
There were a handful of comments that referred to various landscape features. First, I'd like to turn your attention to item number six.
I'm sorry, what's the deal again?
September 4th, it was the most recent one from just this past week. If you have the prior letters, the numbers are still the same, like number six from the prior letter is number six in this letter. That one is the first one, but it, when I say number six in here, it should be the same number six from there. Exactly. All right, so referring to-
I don't have the September one.
I don't either.
I don't either.
I have a June 19th.
September 4th?
Yeah. Are you having?
Yeah. There you go.
This is a letter that we received from the planning board's consulting engineer on September 4th. Item number six indicates that the landscape plan does not include construction details for planting, that we have no issue with the board granting a temporary waiver for this item for the purpose of completeness, and that we would comply with this as a condition of approval. Can you just tell me what construction details for planting entail?
Sure, it's very simple. Again, the planting on this job is really very simple, the dune grasses will be planted by plugs. Can't hear, is it on?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the planting details typically are very simple, in this case, they will specify the, the planting technique, the container size for the plant, whether it's a plug or a bald and burlap detail, or whether it's a, a container, it will indicate that the soil, that the plant hole will be well-drained, it will indicate the type of soil, that and the proper nutrients, and the type of irrigation, as well as a support system for the type of plant. So it's something that's very simple and easily, easily followed up with.
And any of those details that are required will be provided as a condition of the approval, correct?
Certainly, certainly.
Now turning to item 13. Item 13 asks for testimony concerning the signage. You mentioned before that a sign has now been added to the glass by the front facade, is that correct?
That's correct. That's the vinyl adhesive, vinyl applied adhesive sign that said, Asbury Park Beach Club, 1500 Ocean Avenue.
And then turning to comment number-
I'll pay you the letters.
I think they're two inches, two and three inches high.
Just for clarity, the, the name of the business is Three Inches High, is that correct?
That's correct. The business, Asbury Beach Club is three inches high, the address is two inches high.
And then item number 39. Item 39 requests testimony concerning, concerning compliance with Section 3.6 of the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. Have you reviewed Section 3.6 of the waterfront redevelopment?
Yes, I have.
And what is your conclusion as far as whether this plan complies with the requirements in the redevelopment?
It does comply with those requirements. In fact, it refers to street trees which are not permitted on Ocean Avenue. And again, not permitted because they don't grow there, as we've had discussion in the past, so we do comply.
Now turning to the planning letter that we received, this one was back in May, and this was a letter, a letter from Clark Catenhinz. And to that, I'm going to specifically ask you to turn to Section 3.3 concerning landscaping. In the letter, there was a concern about the species of twining vine that had been chosen in the initial submission. How has that comment been addressed?
We substituted, that was a vine called Galsimium, which Mr. Sullivan indicated is actually poisonous if eaten. We hope not to eat it, but as a result-
I've heard, I haven't tried it.
Yeah, no, I know. You know, it's, it's actually true, if you actually Google poisonous plants, you'll be surprised at how many plants actually are poisonous, things like Rhododendron, Hydrangea, things like that. Many, many plants are poisonous. However, because of the comment, we, there are many, many vines that would be appropriate. This is a very good substitute, and it is not poisonous, and I think it checks all the, all the boxes. Yeah, it's native and correct. Yeah, it's native and correct. So all the boxes that you would like to see, this is a very appropriate plant and a good choice.
So in response to the comment, you substituted out the prior plan, the prior plants, and now we have coral honeysuckle.
Coral honeysuckle, Lannisteros sempervirans.
And then item 3.4 in the planner's letter concerning screening of utilities. If you could just go back to that one more time and-
Sure. I'll mention that again. The first transformer, which I indicated on the north end, is a green box transformer that sits above grade, and we buffered that with an ornamental grass about 48 inches taller, maybe higher, called Calumagrostis. The water meter pit is really not visible. It's a flush grate that will be open to access the water meter pit. That's that grate, and that will be within the dune grass area. The gas meter that is located on the south side is attached to the building elevation, and it will be buffered and softened by the vines that are on both sides of that air, of that gas meter. The gas meter can't be hidden entirely because the utility company needs to see that gas meter. So, but it will be buffered, and it will be basically out of sight, out of mind kind of thing, if you will. But it's accessible.
Will the four-feet height be cut down in the off-season?
Yes, it will. After winter, just at the early spring, it gets cut down, and then it comes right back. We'll leave it up throughout the winter. Some people cut them down in the fall. We do not do that. We leave it up for the winter interest.
Which plant was that, for the record?
That was for the Calumagrostis that is buffering the transformer on the north end.
So those are all the questions I have for Mr. Bauer at this time.
So you have all these, excuse me, the latest renderings or drawings that we got, you have a planter box detail, but you didn't really discuss anything about the planter boxes on the boardwalk, like what goes in them, or what's planned? Sorry. On the new plans that we received, you have the detail for the planter box, but you didn't really discuss anything about the planter boxes. What goes in them?
Yes. Happy, happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay, there are planter boxes along the, as you see in this elevation.
Which we'll mark as A48.
Yes. We have, there are, along the fence line that is adjacent to the boardwalk, there are six planters clustered in two per group. So there are three groups, or, I'm sorry, eight. There are four groupings of two planters each, so eight planters. And then there are benches that are proposed to be within, adjacent to each of those planters. Within the planters will be an ornamental grass. I believe we had a Penicetum specified, which again is an ornamental grass within those planters.
And just for clarification, these planters are to be located on the boardwalk and are part of the city's boardwalk reconstruction project. But we show them here to show the relationship between where the boardwalk reconstruction project will meet this project.
They're being included with the boardwalk though because of the ocean going down because the city wants it, right?
It was a way to bring the two projects together.
And the benches also on our plans, the benches are, benches that are norm, that are on the boardwalk now, but on this, on this depiction here, they're not. Which, are we going to be using the same type of benches that are on the boardwalk now?
It's up to the city. Whatever benches the city wants will be the benches that are installed. And that's most likely the benches that are going to match what's on the city boardwalk now.
So will the city be maintaining the planter boxes, or will you be doing that?
Our client will agree to maintain these planter boxes.
And they were included because the wall, much of the boardwalk, it's this massive long blank wall, so you put the planter boxes there to screen that somewhat?
The-
That was the thinking behind it?
The fence line does come up to the property line, and the boardwalk also goes up to the property line.
Right.
And it is-
So was there any thought given to setting that back so that you could maybe plant grasses? You have like a six-foot setback from the wall to the boardwalk, and then plant grasses in there so that it's a more natural buffer than having those butted right up to each other?
Yeah, sure. I think that the solution is similar to what is in other areas along the boardwalk where retail buildings are right up against the boardwalk, and there are benches lined against that retail facade.
The difference with the retail is you have windows and you have, you know-
In some areas, sure.
This is just a long blank wall. So, as, to prevent that kind of harsh edge, was there any thought given to setting it back? Because on the other side, that wall is just the open area within it. There's not really anything going on inside there.
So it's, it's not, on the other side, it's an area where there will be seating.
Yeah, it's just like sand in the more pure area.
Yes. There was testimony previously by the architect about how that fence is an articulated, how the fence there is an articulated fence, which, so it's not one solid piece across. It is a board, and then a board turned out, and then a board turned in. And there was, not to refute the architect, but that was the testimony that he previously provided.
That's a nicely detailed fence. And again, as I mentioned, these bench locations are consistent with other bench locations along the boardwalk. It's within the same rhythm of the other, of the other benches.
You know, the benches are fine. It's not the benches I'm concerned about. It's the, there'd be planter boxes that are on the boardwalk.
Yeah.
You can't tell from that picture, so you think the planter boxes are right next to the fence, but look at the plans. They're not. I can't, need to magnify, but let's tell me how many feet they're off the wall.
Well, they're just subtle. The intention is just to be not against the wall, so that the wall can breathe. But they can be very close to the wall, as can, as can the benches.
It looks like, it looks like two feet?
Yeah, it's just a couple of feet. Maybe one or two feet is fine.
No, it says here, it says two feet.
I have two questions about the coral honeysuckle.
Yes.
In terms of like tolerance to saltwater, is there any literature on that and how this might survive?
It's, it's part, it's selected because of its tolerance.
Okay.
It will be, it will take, it can take salt, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My other question was about the berries. Like, when, when do the berries fruit, and do they fall off?
Yeah, later in the season. And if they do fall, they'll fall within the landscape area. But they, probably the birds will, hummingbirds especially love this fruit. So I don't think they're going to last long. It's very, it's a very subtle fruit as well. It's not very profuse. It's a subtle fruit.
I'll say that. I use, I have used that a lot. And it's, when you mentioned the semi-evergreen, it is evergreen here. Now, it's very sometimes.
Sometimes, that's what I said. It can be in a proper climate. If it gets very, it's a very, very cold winter, it would be less evergreen. But we've had good success with it. It's a good choice. You'll like it.
May I ask a question about L2? I don't remember what the exhibit number was, but it was, the drawing was L2 of the building entry, section facade. What is, what does the dotted line indicate there? This dotted line, sorry, the guideline-
Well, that's just the, that's the finished elevation of the deck. That's the entrance in front of that. See where the stairs are in the middle?
Yeah.
On either side of that is the sloped landscape.
Okay. Okay, got it. So the deck's a little bit below the facade, or at this elevation. And then what, so I love bird-friendly, plants, is there a plan for the glass facade so that birds, or the glass entries, that birds don't mistakenly hit that instead of-
I believe we have a colored tone to it, don't we, Jen? Yes, it has a colored tone so it'll be more visible to birds.
Okay, great. And even when that's closed, it will have a colored tone?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then, I guess, on the subject of birds, I've seen some people put over pools, like wires or something to keep them out. Do you have any plan to keep birds out of the kind of pool area?
No.
Okay, so it'll just be completely open. Great. And my one other question was, so we received a few more sections from the architects as part of the latest submission, I guess, that also went to DEP. And the sections are a little bit inconsistent with your sections, probably because they were updated. These are August 28th. But especially with the footings, where they're indicating breakaway footings and everything else, they're not the same as the sections that you showed us. Should we go with the, with the architect's sections?
The ones submitted to the DEP are the most current. When it, when you come to the technical aspect of the footings, that, that aspect is, I would follow the ones submitted to the DEP by the structural engineer.
Okay, got it. And will we have an opportunity to ask about those later? The most recently submitted drawings?
So those-
Okay.
The, just, just for clarification. So we copied the planning board on those because they were something we were submitting to the DEP, and we definitely were requested by the public, and we agreed to make sure that we were copying the planning board contemporaneously on everything we submitted to the DEP. The DEP had questions related to the structure and the actual footings, and that's within their purview and their jurisdiction. So we wanted to let you know that that information had been sent to them, been transmitted to them, but it, in our view, it's, it's their responsibility to opine on the technical nature of the, of the footings.
Okay.
But we wanted to make sure that you had the same information that they had.
Thank you. And I think I probably, my questions are more kind of informational. And then, one more thing. When you say as a condition of approval, you'll supply details for the planting, can you clarify to whom you supply those details and how that works?
I will supply those to your consultants, the planner and your engineer.
And then, and then the process would be that you approve them?
Let's swear, Michael.
Yeah.
Please, very sorry, Dan. Please swear with your testimony during this contest. Will you be two, 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 two?
Yes.
To connect to the righting of the city.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Caden Hints, planning board planner.
So, or Jack, what is the process by which those, those details are supplied to you and approved?
It's just like any other submission, right? It's, they, once, let's say, once we get to the end of this, the board makes a decision, there'll be conditions. One of the conditions may be that those planting details must be added to the plans. Those details, along with every other change, whether it's engineering or architectural, are made to the plans, and they're submitted for final review and signature.
Okay, cool. So-
And then they govern the-
I might mention, as I caught, so the architect's latest sections have a different grading relative to the facade of the building to the landscape architects. So I guess I would say, along with the planting detail as a condition, I would look for consistency in the grading up to the facade, whether it's consistent with the latest drawings that were given to us or with the architectural plans. In some cases, there's a gap in between, and others there, there isn't. A gap in between the Corten steel and the facade of the building, and it's a little bit lower. So, just a note.
But we're on this picture. Okay, so this will take three to four years to get that one.
Yes.
Do you have pictures of what would look like A43, which is a picture of the cable, just blank cables, and then what would look like in six months, a year, what would look like in the wintertime?
We did not prepare those.
Can we, how do we get to see those? Because this is pretty, three to four years down the road, but what do we look at for three to four years? What do we look at? Does this come, I know nothing about coral honeysuckle, from what I heard tonight. Does it die off completely in the wintertime? And we have, again, bareness, and has it grow back 100%?
No, that's what I mentioned. It's, as you mentioned, it's basically an evergreen plant in the, in the right zone. We're just on the fringe of where it is an evergreens material year-round. So I just want to point out that it could drop some leaves, but generally it's evergreen in this area, especially when it's protected on that Ocean Avenue side from the ocean. So we should, we receive good sun from the, from the west side, so be warm and out of the wind. So it's very likely that it will be very much of an evergreen material.
Actually, I agree with John, for us to be able to see what this is going to look like for four years, your, your number, not ours, to say, what is this going to look like until, until it's fully grown in? So I agree that we need, we need to see something.
Okay.
I understand that nothing was, nothing was created, but I think that we need to see something.
Okay.
That shows us what, what to expect day one, and, you know, maybe a year out, or, you know, pick some, some period of time in winter.
Okay.
That would be, that would be really very much appreciated. Does the board have any other questions at this point?
Nothing.
No? Would you like, our professionals, do you have anything? No? Our friends, does Mr. Lieberman have anything?
I do, thank you very much.
Come on up.
I will, thank you.
Oh, there's a chair right behind you.
Share a microphone.
Stuart Lieberman, for the organization, for the municipal organization, citizen organization. A few questions. I, some of the questions that I was going to ask you the mayor asked. But what happens when, after a period of time, some of the plants die? Because they have a lifespan. So what's it going to look like when you have death of some of the vegetation, and how are you going to handle that?
If a plant died, we would replace it.
But, but there would be a size difference, right, between what you replace it with and the balance? And what would that vacancy, that void, look like?
It would, there would be a size difference, and then that plant would grow, as is in typical landscape on every site that we've ever been involved with.
Three to four years?
Plants do die. Plants are replaced.
Okay, but the void would take three to four years to fix?
To get to its ultimate to cover. That's correct. If you're speaking specifically about the vine, yes.
That's what I'm, so that's what I was talking about, the coral honeysuckle for the most part. That's what I was talking about. And what experience have you had in terms of using coral honeysuckle on an exterior wall application such as that that you're proposing here? That specific species?
We have had experience with it.
Okay. Do you have any literature reflecting usage of that vine and that kind of application that you've relied upon?
There is much literature online.
Online, using that application, as you're suggesting here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and what is it, have there been studies that indicate that, what the success rate is, and how long it generally, what, what, could you, could you give testimony as to that?
Sure. I think I gave the testimony about how that plan performs.
Okay. How many years does it last before it starts to die generally? What's the lifespan?
That I don't know. It can last a very long time. It just, it continues to grow. I don't know that it has a lifespan per se, but it continues to grow and propagate, and there's always new growth on that vine. Yes.
Okay. Like, if you'll go, if you were to go to my house, and you're invited-
It will outlast us, I can tell you that.
Those types of things at my house get woody. Do you know what I mean by woody?
Yes, yes, I do.
Does this get woody?
It does get woody, yes, yes.
So, so when it gets woody, it, for example, my house, and this is all I know, I'm not a horticulturist, I'm not, certainly not you, but I know when it gets woody, all of that green vegetation that you, you're shooting for it sort of disappears, and then it's brown.
That's where maintenance comes into play. Because your house is pretty good for an attorney to point out the woody plants. That's very good.
It took me hours to come up with that question.
I bet it did. I bet it did. I bet it did. But that's where maintenance, Stuart, that's where maintenance comes into play. And you cut, because generally, the newest growth, the one to two-year growth is what flowers the most.
Okay.
So there is some maintenance involved with woody vines like this, yes.
Okay.
And that will be taken care of.
But, but after a certain period of time, woody-ness is inevitable despite maintenance, isn't that correct?
Woody-ness is inevitable despite maintenance.
That's right.
If, if you ignored it entirely-
Right.
It would, it would, it would become woody, yes.
The-
But understand, as I mentioned, these, all of this landscape will be maintained.
Okay. Who's going to maintain it?
The maintenance staff. No. You and I can get together on the weekends, if you like.
Well, no, no. I have enough on the week. No, what I meant, no, it wasn't a facetious question. What I meant is, are trained individuals doing it, or are the same people that are going to be taking out the trash and that kind of-
Certainly trained landscape contractors will be doing the maintenance on the site.
Okay, okay. Now, what's, from a landscape architectural standpoint, what's the purpose of the sand composition inside the facility? In other words, it looks like you're recreating a beach or something inside. Is that a fair way to characterize what you're trying to do?
Sure. I mean, it's a beach club. The people will be lounging on chaise lounges and other seating elements and towels, and they will enjoy the area, which is made up of the ground plane of a wood deck and sand. They're the two ground plane materials, yes.
And, and will the sand be, you know, will it be confined from the pool such that it can't get into the pool, or is it going to be like a berm around it, or how's that going to, how's it going to be installed?
Well, again, this is not part of the landscape testimony, but the sand will be at the level of the boardwalk deck.
Okay.
And it will be maintained by our staff.
But, but what, if it, but what I'm trying to get at is, if it goes over the boardwalk deck, it goes into the pool, if I understand the configuration, or am I wrong?
Mr. Bauer was not the one who testified about the configuration of the deck and the pool. That was the architect.
But it's his sand. It's his sand. And I'm trying to understand, see, I'm just trying to understand if the sand will get into the pool and what, and whether the filtration, if you know, can handle that. In other words-
If the sand got into the pool, it would settle to the bottom, and it would be vacuumed daily by the staff.
I see. Are you installing it in a manner to preclude that from happening?
It will be, to preclude. What would cause the sand to go into the pool? It will be, to preclude, what would cause the sand to go into the pool?
People walking.
Yeah, sure, sure. Wet feet will carry it in, wind may blow it in, and it would be maintained and vacuumed, as I mentioned, and removed from the bottom of the pool.
Now, you're using irrigated vegetation as part of the plantings, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it true, because I thought this was, but I wasn't, the drawings were a little complicated to me, is it true that that same irrigated vegetation is part of the stormwater system?
I don't understand the question.
Okay. Is the, does the stormwater system depend on some of that irrigated vegetation in order to achieve whatever it has to do to function? Do you know, is there any connection?
The stormwater system has nothing to do with the irrigation system.
Just for clarification, Mr. Delaney did testify to the stormwater system. You know, Mr. Bauer is here to testify about the landscape.
I understand, but the reason I'm asking, you're right, and I appreciate that. The reason I'm asking that is he indicated that he was relying on irrigated vegetation as part of the stormwater system. I'm asking if this is the same irrigated vegetation. That's all I'm trying to understand.
That's a question for Mr. Delaney, though.
Okay. So you don't know?
I don't understand the connection between stormwater and landscape irrigation.
Okay. Those are the questions I have. Thank you for your curts.
Thank you, very welcome.
All right. Are we okay? Our professionals are still okay? Planning board's still okay? All right. At this point, we'll open it up for public questions. Once again, please stick to the testimony that was given.
Questions.
Sure. You mentioned you wanted to install the coral honeysuckle.
We need your name and address, please.
Rob Taylor, 1501 Ocean Avenue. You mentioned you want to use coral honeysuckle. Is that the vine?
That's correct.
Doesn't it, if ingested, the berries, doesn't it, is it noxious to small animals and dogs? And would it cause vomiting and nausea in humans?
No.
That's not what it says online.
Our information says it is not at all poisonous.
Then I'd suggest that we do a little bit more research on that, because I've gone multiple sites and it's all saying the same thing. Also, you're really banking on that nice westerly sunshine that you're not going to get when 1501 is in the way. So, western sunshine that you're relying on for those vines to do really well aren't going to happen. By the way, also, I'm not a horticulturist either, but when things start, when the, you have a tree, right, the trunks grow wider. So the wooding effect that the attorney was talking about is going to happen no matter how much you prune those trees. Isn't that correct?
The vine will grow.
And it will widen and wooden at the bottom.
Correct.
Then why didn't you say that before? Because that was the question that was asked. Correct?
What is your question, sir?
Why did you miss answer the question before?
I don't believe I missed answered the question.
All evidence to the contrary. I'm also going to ask you a question about the guaranteed greening. So now we have no wind, we have wooding. You don't know how long it's going to last. You don't know how long the plant is going to take. Am I incorrect in any statement I just said?
Well, the plant, the vine is going to grow for a very, very long time.
Am I incorrect with any statement I just said? That was my question.
Repeat your statements. I'll tell you if you're incorrect.
I said, you don't know how long it's going to last. We now know it's going to wood.
It will last a very long time. I don't know the exact life expectancy.
Then you don't know.
I don't know the exact life expectancy. I don't think anyone but God would know that. It just grows. It's a growing vine. It will survive here and it will be very sustainable.
Do you think it also attracts bees, that vine?
I'm sorry, say again?
You said it attracts bees. Do you think that's a good idea?
I think it's a great idea, yes.
Around where the kids are going to be running around?
It's fine. It's, bees are around a lot of flowering material.
Okay. Around an entertainment area?
It's fine. If bees are on the vine, they're not in the pool area.
Are you going to explain to the bees they need to stay in the vine and not go in the pool area running around?
I don't think that's necessary.
You know, one thing I didn't see here, which kind of concerns me, is that they're supposed to be, you know, I'm looking at landscaping.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm looking at the landscaping design here, and I know that supposedly the dunes are separate from this, but I don't know how you separate those two things out, because your original plan had the boardwalk going all the way out to oblivion and coming back. So I really think you're going to...
That's, I'm sorry, that's a different plan. This has nothing to do with the beach club. That question has nothing to do with the beach club.
But it's difficult for anyone in the community to evaluate how this affects things without seeing how everything impacts things. It's kind of, you know, you wouldn't build one thing and not understand the other.
This is a site plan for the beach club. If you have a question for the site plan about the beach club, we'll be glad to entertain that.
Okay. Also, you know, are you anticipating any additional maintenance? Because you're going to have a one-long wall there, you're going to have sand blowing into it. How are you going to handle excess sand hitting that fence and having nowhere to go? Because I also see that you're putting up these pots there, which sound really good, but the pots are, essentially going to create collection points for sand on the boardwalk. And that's one of the reasons that the benches are designed where they are, they have only feet to stop from sand collection of this land room, sand room where it should. Correct?
I think the answer to your question is that maintenance will be provided as needed.
Okay. And who's going to pay for that maintenance?
I think the applicant indicated that, or we would.
Okay, for taking care of all the sand around there, too. Okay. The other thing I have a question on is, how is your landscape plan impacted by having to adhere to a street scape concept? Because right now, you're basically going to the far ends, and if you have to go based upon street scape, that's going to cut off the ends. How does that impact your...
I don't understand your question, sir.
All right. So right now, the way the property is designed, you have going up to the cement walkway on Sixth Avenue, and you're proposing another cement walkway on the other end, right? So that would basically go up and basically impact the street scape, which you generally have on streets, so you have view all the way through. So if you're going to get rid of, if you're going to have to now move into, basically adhere to a street scape concept, how does that impact the landscaping design?
Just for clarification, are you talking about view corridors?
Yes, as the landscape design impacted by the view corridors.
Our planner will be addressing the view corridor question. He's our next witness.
All right. And then we can recall this gentleman to talk about that, once we have the answer to the other one.
I think the planner will be testifying about how there's no landscaping in the view corridor, but I'll let him testify.
Okay, well.
Bill Macklin, 1701 Ocean Avenue. Look, I'm not a landscaper or a horticulturist. Are you, sir, a horticulturist?
I'm a landscape architect.
Are you?
Yes.
You are? Well, I'll tell you one thing. I've been growing, I'm 87, I've been growing honeysuckle for many, many years. It doesn't get woody. It doesn't get woody. It grows and it gets leafy, but it doesn't get woody. So I don't know what kind of honeysuckle you've been growing. In any case, you're not going to get any birds. I think that's a hybrid that you have, coral. I don't think it has any nectar in it, so you're not going to get any birds. Even if you would, those birds are not, you only get hummingbirds, and they're not going to hang down on the beach with all those, with bikes, scooters, people. They're not going to be there. They frighten off quickly. So I don't, you know, I'm really questioning your technical background. I have very little. I'm not a horticulturist, but I have been growing it for years.
Okay.
Okay. Who's going to maintain this? You're growing something that's sensitive. You get fungus, you get insects. You have to examine that honeysuckle every damn day to see what's new, because otherwise, you're going to get some kind of plant that, you're going to get some kind of infection that's going to do away with the plant very shortly once it takes over. That's why I'm questioning you on your background, really. Have you personally grown honeysuckle?
I have not grown it myself. We have specified it, and it has been grown on projects that we have designed.
Well, you picked a bad plant, I think, to demonstrate. Right.
Questions.
All right. Can you continue with, if you have any questions?
Pardon me?
If you have a question, please.
I have other questions. I'll move along here. I'm just taken back by what I have heard. I still don't have an image or concept in my mind of what the whole project's going to look like, because there's never been a model of it. I mean, I see the honeysuckle, it's a very pretty plant, a nice selection, but not, I have real questions about whether it will grow in the environment there, or it'll flourish, anyway. You know, I don't know. And I have an impression that you're not sure. That's mine, I may be wrong. In any case, I'm, you know, that wooden fence is, you're putting ivory up there, that wooden fence is very ugly. It's very ugly.
Is there a question, please? We need a question?
It's not a comment period.
As opposed to comments, please?
You're right. Okay. I will, I will stop, but...
If you have questions, we're happy to hear them.
Pardon me?
If you have questions, we're happy to hear them. Comments are for another session.
I appreciate the opportunity to question the horticulturist.
Okay. Thank you.
Joyce Grant, Asbury Tower and Asbury Park. All right, I want to ask you whether or not this honeysuckle vine is a New Jersey native plant species?
It's native to our area.
Excuse me?
It is a native plant to our area.
It's a New Jersey native plant?
It's native to our area.
Native to our area?
This area of the United States, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Muller, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I appreciate your efforts to put lipstick on this pig, but I do question the use of the honeysuckle. Can we put up that slide that shows that, the facade with the greenery on it? Okay.
This one?
Just leave that one right there. That's a lot of honeysuckle. I have lived there for 11 years. 11 years I have not seen one single bee, have not felt the need to carry an epipen. So I really do question this. And when I was doing the research for the trees around our building, and I drove up and down this coast, every town, every house, to find a tree that would survive, I never once saw a honeysuckle. So I'm just asking you again, why introduce a plant that will invite a species into our area that we do not currently have? We have no bees. So you're saying, these are great, let's bring them in. Let's hand out epipens to everyone. And that's why I have to say thank you.
Dave Michelson, I live across the street from that boondoggle and 1501 Ocean Avenue. I had a question, I guess maybe it's basic. Why does that wall, well, first of all, why does there have to be a wall? Because the building has a wall, right? And second, why does it have to be covered like that? I mean, what's, I've been in Asbury 12 years. I've never seen ivy anywhere else. There's no ivy on the entire length of Ocean Avenue. Why does it have to be there at all?
Do you want to just...
And of course, why do we need a 20-foot wall in addition to an 18-foot building?
Do you want to address other instances of ivy?
Do you want to make an answer?
Other...
I mean, what's the purpose of the ivy? To cover it up?
It's a green wall.
Can you make a nicer wall, maybe?
Yes, it's a green wall. Green walls are very popular today.
No, but what's underneath it? What does the wall...
The material of the building, the facade, is wood.
So why do you need the ivy in the first place? What is it?
It's a design intent.
But is it necessary? Can you save yourself some money by not paying for the ivy? I mean, it just looks so ugly. It mottles my mind.
I understand. We believe that the trellis and green wall is attractive.
Who here thinks that's attractive? Raise your hand.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Dave Ziegler. I live on Fourth Avenue. So I have a question regarding the bikes. How many bike racks are you putting in?
We're putting four new bike racks in that hold seven bikes each.
Okay. What's the motivation behind putting these additional bike racks in?
I think bike racks are very desirable.
From what I recall in the last meeting, we had an issue with parking, and there wasn't any new parking putting in. So for me, I see that as a motivation for why you're putting more bikes in. But who's riding the bikes? Is it Hugh Jackson, Lady Gaga? I'm just curious.
Is there a question there?
That was a question.
About Lady Gaga?
Who's riding the bikes? Lady Gaga? I mean...
Residents.
Residents? I mean, is...
Guests of the beach club.
The members or...
Public, members of the public.
Okay, so the members...
Any cyclist can park their bicycle there.
The members of the beach club that's not on the beach are going to be going there from the ocean club?
Anyone can use that bicycle rack.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Claire Sheprow, 510 Deal Lake Drive. I had a couple of questions about the honeysuckle. I'm sure you're familiar that many species of vines and honeysuckle are considered invasive. Can you confirm whether or not this species is...
Yes, this is not an invasive species of honeysuckle.
Okay, great.
There are invasive species. This is not one.
Wonderful. And you answered one of the board members that this particular species is tolerant of salt air, but in your original testimony, you stated, quote, "when protected from ocean, wind, and salt air." And I'm curious, do you believe that putting something on the west side of a wall on Ocean Avenue would protect it from wind and salt air? Because I think everyone in this room who lives here would disagree with that. We all have cars and porch furniture and our own plants that don't tolerate salt air.
I understand. It's not directly focused on the ocean, so it is protected. If it's on the west side, there is some protection. There is still salt in the air, and there is still wind in the air, certainly.
Certainly west blowing winds, right?
No, I understand, yes. But it's not the ocean breeze, right, that carries the most salt.
So you are saying that the species...
This is the protected side of the building.
Right. So you're saying that, because you said you don't have any experience growing this particular species, but that...
I indicated that I have not personally grown honeysuckle in my experience.
Right, but that your research, you said, quote, "when protected from salt air." So do you have evidence that that would be enough protection from salt air to allow this to flourish?
I believe it will.
Based on?
Past experience and research.
I thought you said you had not had past experience with this species.
No, you misunderstood. I said, I have not planted it myself. That was the question. Have I grown it myself?
So which experience, then?
It's been specified. I've been a landscape architect for 40-some years, and we've specified it many times in the past, and it has been installed on other projects that we've been involved with. That's my experience.
Okay. And can you speak, expand on how exactly it would impact our fragile ecosystem here on the coast?
How? I don't think it will impact it in any way.
Have you done any studies and looked into that? You talked about it drawing certain species and bees and such.
I think it's a very appropriate species for this location.
You think, can you provide any, any support?
It's my opinion.
It's your opinion, but you don't have anything, you haven't done any research to...
No, I said, I indicated that I have done research in this plant selection, and I feel very comfortable that it will be appropriate in this location.
Okay. Is that something that you could provide publicly, that, like, some sort of evidence to back that up?
Provide what, ma'am? I'm sorry?
Could you provide some sort of, like, you said that you had these online sites. Can you provide something that we could see?
There is a great amount of material online. If you wish to Google it, you can find that. The research that I've done is not written.
Okay, but you don't have any specifics about how it would impact the ecosystem?
Just online material.
Just that it would bring bees.
Online information, yes.
Okay. And you also mentioned that there would be other species of plants that would be utilized inside.
I'm sorry, if you talk a little slower and clearer, please.
Yeah, you also mentioned that there would be other species of plants that would be utilized inside. Can you expand on what those would be and how they would impact the ecosystem?
I don't think they will have any impact on the ecosystem inside the plant there. There's Callum agrosto and Boston ivy, and Rosa regosa that is being planted inside the beach club.
What was the third one?
Rosa regosa.
Rosa regosa and Boston ivy. Okay, thank you. I believe that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Polly Shilga, Fifth Avenue. I have a question about the honeysuckle. I have grown honeysuckle, various varieties. This particular one, as well as the other varieties that I have experience with, are green, evergreen in Zone 8 and warmer, and we are Zone 7. I have never seen an evergreen honeysuckle anywhere around here. It looks ugly in the winter. It just is brown. It's lost many of its leaves, if not all of them. I guess that's not a question, it's a statement. But did you know that?
I indicated that it is a borderline evergreen in our zone.
I heard you say that.
I did indicate that. I understand.
Borderline in the zones, yes. Yeah, so we're zone seven. It's, it's evergreen, zone eight and warmer. So anybody can just check that out on Wikipedia right now. So the, the other question I have is, it's going to look ugly. It's going to take a long time to grow. If it were going to be even remotely evergreen throughout half the year, what's it planted in? What's, what's the, the growing medium? Is it mostly?
It'd be a sandy loam and, yeah, well-drained. It even does take some drought tolerance.
Good luck with that. Sorry. I don't, I don't see it turning green or staying green, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Felicia Simmons Sewell, Felicia Simmons Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. I have a question about the tall grass, whatever that is called, that's around the box, the transformer. How thick and how dry? And how deep do the roots go on that grass? And you also mentioned that it'll also be placed throughout the establishment. Whereabout throughout the establishment does this four-foot-tall grass thing will be planted?
Yes, ma'am. The four-foot-tall grass is called Calumagrostis. It's an ornamental grass. It's specifically planted on the, on the, on the exterior of a site around the transformer. That is on the northwest corner of the site. And in addition to that, on the interior of the, of the site, we have it along the fence line.
So all the way along the fence line?
Yes, ma'am.
How thick will it be planted?
How thick will it be planted?
How thick?
You mean the size of the initial planting?
Yes. And, and how, and then how, from the initial planting, how thick would it grow out after the initial planting?
It's generally a tall and narrow grass. It grows maybe 18 inches wide and four and a half feet high, thereabouts.
How deep does the roots grow?
Oh, maybe 18 inches or so.
Okay. So, and other questions at the end. So what kind of water process are we going to be using? How much water are we going to be using out? And the rotting and drainage from the water use?
The, the site will be all well-drained, and the irrigation will be provided as necessary through an automatic irrigation system, which is called a drip system. So you won't see sprayheads throwing water around. You'll, it'll just be spaghetti lines of irrigation that will provide moisture to the soil as needed for the plants. And that will be monitored by our maintenance staff.
And that would, and the vining growing up off the side of the wooden building with the metal spikes, they wouldn't need any water or dusting or misting going up the vine?
No, ma'am.
And it wouldn't?
Natural rainfall would, would take care of whatever moisture, just wash off the plants. Rainfall washes salt off a plant as, as needed, but the moisture is provided at the root level.
And with the moisture and the growing of the roots throughout the wood, the wooden planks, what is the long-term aging of replacement before, replacement of the wooden planks after the moisture and the growth and the new animals to the area and the new insects? How long would this wooden plank, and what exactly would the, what kind of?
You're referring to the wood deck inside around the pool area?
Inside and around the pool and the wood that the estuary is made out of.
And the walkway outside. Yeah, the, the wood is called an ipe. It's a very dense hardwood. It has a very, very long life expectancy.
Even with all the extra moisture on the shore?
Yes, ma'am.
And with all the new animals and burrowing, because we have, like, termites here, we have ants, and we have a lot of insects. So is it, is it all treated for the insects?
It's a very dense hardwood.
And the name of this, what is?
Ipe. Spelled I-P-E.
And it has a very long life? How long is a long life?
Long. Long.
Estimation?
Easily 20 years to 30 years.
Even with accelerated, again, the environmental acceleration of wood?
Yes, ma'am.
In the area of moisture, windstorms, all that?
Yes.
Okay. How many inches from the inside of the estuary? I was just showing it down. Are these, the wood, the grass, how is that planted? How far is that planted inwards? The, the grass that's growing along, going to have in, along the inside of the estuary?
Are you referring to the Calumagrostis that's planted on the interior?
Yes.
It will be planted about two feet off of the fence. Is that what you're asking me, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes.
And how close are the planter boxes to your wall?
Two feet or less.
I'm sorry, I'm taking notes. And just with the, with all the irrigation and the drainage all around it, we, I asked you before previously, but how much water would we be using?
As little as, as little as possible.
How much is as little as possible?
Whatever the, it depends on the climate, ma'am. If it's a very, very hot time of the year, it will use more water than if it was very cool. In the cool months, we don't need any water in our irrigation or climate, because the rainfall provides the adequate amount of irrigation.
What kind of fertilizer are we using?
Really very little fertilizer.
What kind?
I don't know specif- specifically. I would have to check in the research to tell you the, the mix of fertilizer for each individual type of plant material.
Because I was just hearing at a meeting yesterday that you are supposed to be, they are recommending from the shade tree that we change the fertilizer and it not be used so much of it so it doesn't drain into our lakes?
Yeah, we don't want to use a lot of fertilizer, ma'am.
Because that's a huge breeding, growing plant that will eat and suck a lot of moisture. So I think, like, knowing how much water we're going to be consuming, we're supposed to be, you know, going towards a eco-friendly town. You know, we like to bike. We go away from plastic. You know, we do all those things. It would be really good to know how much water consumption would this facility be, you know, using and maintaining on top of the pool, in the showers, in all the?
In terms of water use and fertilizer, we will in fact be eco-friendly.
How?
By monitoring the, the amount of use of each product. We will not over-irrigate. We will not over-fertilize.
But what is, what do you consider, or a range of what do you consider of irrigation? What is normal? What is, what is a projected?
Ma'am, it's, it's really on an as-needed basis based upon the weather, the amount of rainfall. If we're in a drought situation, we will need irrigation. If we have ample rainfall, we don't need any. In an ideal world, we wouldn't have any irrigation. And again, once this plant material is, is established, we don't need any. If you look at a naturalized dune area, many times we irrigate the dunes to establish the dune grass. And then once it's established, we don't irrigate it at all. The natural rainfall is more than adequate for your normal dune area.
And that's great, but we have four years until we get there. So in the four years?
Well, we don't have four years until the dune grass gets established. We have four years until the vine covers the building.
My asking is not just for irrigation for the dune grass. It's for the whole?
I think, excuse me, I think that the, the question has been asked. It's been answered to the best of the professional's ability. You have another question?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't, oh, I do.
Okay.
The 28 bike racks, sorry. Right? How far unto the boardwalk will these 28 bike racks be seated?
I'm sorry, ask me the question one more time?
The, the bike racks?
Yes, ma'am.
The spaces, 28 spaces. How far out from the front of the estuary will the bike racks be placed?
How far from the front of what, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Where are you placing the bike? First, okay.
Generally, if you look at the graphic, there are four vertical lines, as she's highlighting right now.
Can you pull up the bike rack picture? It's right there. Oh.
Bike rack, well, you asked where they're located. This shows where they're located.
Adjacent to the sidewalk on Ocean Avenue.
So one, two, three, four.
Okay. And how far out will they extend?
They, out into the sidewalk?
So the bike rack is here, and where would it be? You showed me their place right there.
Yes, ma'am.
So they come out, or the framing, how far does it come out to sit the bike racks on the front of the estuary?
Out to what? I don't understand your question. They're, they're nowhere near the boardwalk.
To the sidewalk.
Oh, to the sidewalk. Okay, that's what I was asking. They're several feet off of the sidewalk and then inward, away from the sidewalk. They're not into the sidewalk at all.
They're into the?
There is, we have a wood deck area that the bike racks will be located, placed on, more of the ipe deck.
And that is, how far, that's right on your property line or right?
That's on our property.
So you've said, so on that, I don't know what to call it. How you come in, that's about, what, two feet or so in from there?
They're several feet off the edge of the sidewalk. They begin. And then they're about, say, seven feet wide, each one of them.
Seven feet?
Approximately, yes. They, each one supports seven bicycles.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just, just one, one, one thing before we continue, if you don't mind. If you've already asked questions, please, our rule is that there's one time up. If you feel that you want to ask additional questions, please allow other people to go first. And then, if you wouldn't mind, because I see there are some people asking repeat questions. I mean, repeat people coming up. So if you wouldn't mind just being the last, just, so we have, we give everybody an opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Cramp, 606 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park. My question is, what kind of pesticide, what kind of pesticides are you going to be using on the building?
I, I don't know at this point in time. I, we wouldn't use any unless they're needed.
The reason why I ask is because I walk by the Asbury every day in the new Ice Star Building, and there are pesticide signs on the grass, which means they're using chemicals that run off into the ocean. So my question is, are you going to be using chemicals on these plants?
I, I, Lisa, I don't know the answer to that at this point in time. If it was necessary to treat it, I'm sure we would. If we don't have to, we won't. We prefer not to, again, because we want to be eco-friendly. Yes.
Carrie Butch, 500 Del Lake Drive. Can you put back that picture of the, the club? I just want to ask a question.
Which photo, ma'am?
The one with the foliage on it, the?
The render.
The wall.
This one?
Okay. You're a designer. You're a landscape architect, a landscape designer. When you put foliage on a wall, are you trying to tell people that this is an exclusive club? Because, you know, it sort of reminds you of, like, an Ivy League school, or, or, or areas like, you know, Princeton, where, where they have, where they have foliage on a wall? Like, is, when you're designing that, when you're specifically designing that, were you, were you given the task to design an exclusive-looking club?
No, we were not.
Okay, but if I came to you as a, as a client, and I said, you know what, I really want to design a, a, an exclusive-looking club, that's really, you know, would this be one of the options that you gave me?
It may, might be.
It might be? I get the impression that that, I, well, I, thank you. Thank you.
Jerry Dunworth, Second Avenue. I'd like to ask about the planters. I think you testified that the planters are going to be placed two feet from the east wall, correct?
That's correct.
How, how deep are the planters? I'm trying to?
I, I believe, I don't have the plant, but I believe they were 30-inch-high planters?
No.
They're 30-inch?
How much, how much actual boardwalk space are you taking up to the?
Oh, I think they were two feet wide.
So you've got four feet of boardwalk space that you're taking up with those, correct?
Which is about, the, the idea is that they take up the same dimension that the benches take up that are on the boardwalk today. The benches are about 30 inches wide. They're set a foot off. So the planters would be in the same line as the benches, so they're not taking up any circulation space whatsoever.
Well, people can't sit on the planters, though.
No, but you wouldn't walk in and out of benches. If you're walking linearly, you would walk in front of the bench.
It's just that people are not going to be able to use the space where the planters are. My question is, has it been discussed whether those planters can be recessed into the wall instead of out on the public boardwalk?
No.
I'd like to ask the board to consider that.
Hi, Lush Bishop, 1501 Ocean Avenue. When the pool club is closed at the end of the season, where is the staff going to be to take care of all of this for the rest of the year?
I, I believe the staff is year-round.
By that, just to clarify, you, you mentioned that before, that the landscapers would be hired from outside, and they would be there year-round, correct?
A landscape contractor, right.
Did you hear the answer to your question?
Oh, sorry.
It was? Go ahead.
Sorry, I don't like that I have to fully turn my back, but I said to Mr. Bauer, earlier, he had testified that it would be the landscape contractors that would take care of the front maintenance. And my question to him was, is it the landscape contractors that would be under contract year-round to do this maintenance?
Yes.
So this, I'm sorry, Madeline Monaco, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I'm just following up on your statement. So you're planning to have this club opened year-round?
That's not what we said, no.
And?
It's not what, it's not what you said.
No, I said that there would be year-round maintenance as necessary.
Okay.
The club is not open year-round.
Okay. Has this particular honeysuckle that you've been talking about, has it been specifically specified for an oceanfront, saltwater environment?
Specifically, no. You mean?
Do you have experience with this in an oceanfront environment?
Sure.
Where's that?
I can't tell you right offhand right now, but other areas, other job sites, other projects, whether it be commercial or residential?
On the east coast?
Sure.
Of New Jersey?
Yes.
You have this particular honeysuckle growing on a building that's just off of the?
I don't know if exactly in this scenario, this is unique, that it's on this exact use, a type of use, but it certainly has been done in gardens and other areas along the east coast for sure. Yes.
Okay. The coral vine growth rate that you mentioned, is that the growth rate in a salty sea, ocean environment? The, what did you say, five to 10 feet?
Did you find seven to 10 feet? Is that what you're looking at on your phone?
No, I'm not. I'm asking you a question.
Yeah, seven to 10.
About whether this has been the growth rate that you found in a saltwater environment?
The growth rate is not specified in a salt environment that I am aware of. It's just a general growth rate.
So we don't know?
I've read anywhere from five to 12. Seven to 10 is more common.
Okay. So we don't know then, or you don't know?
Sure.
That that is going to be the growth rate in this particular location?
Yeah, that's correct. I cannot say for a matter of fact, but that is what the research tells us.
What, what research are you talking about?
The research that we've done on, researching the growth rate of, you're, you're obviously Googling it as well right now.
No, I'm not. I have questions that I've written that are on my phone. So I remember to ask them. I'm not Googling anything.
Yes, if you Google it, you will see it's anywhere from seven to 10, five to 12. It varies depending on which, which site you're looking at.
Okay. And do you have specific references for this in an oceanfront environment?
In an oceanfront, specific reference for growth rate? No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Who decided to bring the boardwalk and the pool club projects together with the planter boxes? I think you mentioned that this was, when somebody asked who, who told you to put these planter boxes there, you said it was decided that the, to bring the two projects together. Who decided that and who approved that?
The boardwalk plans have been approved by the city council after a series of public meetings and public charrette. And they were designed and submitted to the DEP.
I don't remember, I was part of that charrette, and I do not remember planter boxes being on the boardwalk. Because you didn't, you were, you didn't want to talk about the pool club at that point. So why would we have put planter boxes there instead of benches that people can use?
I'm not sure what the exact question is there. The?
The question is, I don't remember, well, okay. I don't remember seeing, you just stated that those planter boxes were part of the boardwalk redesign at the charrette. I was there. I don't remember seeing that. When was it decided that those planter boxes would, what, which design included those planter boxes?
The city council approved the plans a few months ago that were submitted to the DEP. I can't tell you at what, I know they were on those plans that were approved by the city council, and that have been reviewed by the city, cities' engineers.
Maybe we'll, we'll talk about that at a council meeting, then, because I, I don't remember seeing that. I don't know if anybody else does, but I don't remember. Okay, so why can't you push back those planter boxes onto your property as opposed to having them taking up four feet of public space on the boardwalk?
No, again, just for clarification, to understand that we have a series of benches that take up a dimension of boardwalk. The planters are proposed to take, to fall within that same dimension. So you're really not taking up, right, if I'm clear, you're not taking up boardwalk area that you can walk linearly. It's in the same, there are benches. You don't walk between benches.
But, but as the gentleman stated before, people can actually use those benches to sit. We have a senior tower not very far away. People often need to sit, but they can't walk that far. People could be using that space for benches as?
For more benches, you're saying?
Sorry?
For more benches?
For more benches.
Sure. But there's still ample room for more benches, should the city want to add more benches.
Okay, but you're still taking up, how, how wide are these planter boxes? Okay, but you're still taking up, how, how wide are these planters? I know you said how deep they are.
The planters, I believe, are eight feet.
Eight feet, each of them?
Eight each, yeah.
And how many are there?
Eight.
Eight, at eight feet. That's 60, I'm a scientist, that's 64 feet.
That's pretty good.
I can do the math, yeah. Okay, that's a lot of space to be taking up off of our public boardwalk that we pay for. Okay, on slide A9, can you bring up that slide again, please? How wide is the boardwalk on that slide?
This, that's not within Mr. Bauer's scope of testimony, and it's whatever the width is on the plans that were approved by the city council.
Okay, it's misrepresented, and that was brought up at a previous planning board meeting, and I'm surprised that you haven't corrected that slide, because it's not, it looks much wider. It looks like your planter boxes and your pool club are taking up a lot less space.
This is, this is the exact same slide that was presented before.
I understand that, and you were told that...
And this slide is accurate. And the boardwalk is 60 feet wide, and that slide is accurate.
That slide represents 60 feet of boardwalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Who will maintain the planter boxes which are on the city's property?
We will.
You will?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you've said the wall that's facing Ocean Avenue will be protected from the wind. Have you ever walked down Ocean Avenue in a storm?
It's, it's protected from the ocean wind, from the east wind, which brings in...
Have you ever walked, there's a lot of open space surrounding this building?
No, I understand, yes.
Okay. What will happen if the wind whips these vines around?
They should be fine.
They will withstand nor'easters and high-force winds, storm winds?
We hope so, yes. Yes, yes. We all, we all hope so, yes.
Okay. What, will the bicycles, I, I understand the bicycle racks are going to be facing, facing the sidewalk on Ocean Avenue, and they're going to be set back a bit. Will any of the bicycles protrude onto the sidewalk?
No, they'll be parked...
They'll be fully contained?
That's correct. They'll be parked, parallel to the curb line, if you will.
Okay. Okay, and then, this wall is 20 feet high, and you're expecting that the vine is going to grow all the way up to 20 feet. What will the people living across the street be looking at from the first to the fourth floors? Are they going to be able to, are they going to see this vine from across the street on the first, second, third, and fourth floors of 1501 Ocean Avenue?
Sure.
So they're going to be looking directly at this wall from the first to the fourth floors?
Wait, just so I clarify. We do have our planner who'll be testifying as the view courtors, so this is a view corridor question. If you're asking if someone could look down at the beach club, and will they see green vines?
The question was, can you see the vine? That's what I was answering, yes, you can see the vine, certainly.
Like, say, the third or fourth floor of that building, are you going to be looking at vines?
No.
You can see the vine.
But it would be down, correct?
You'll be looking down at the vine.
Okay, I, we'll wait for the planner then.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me just see if I have anything else. Nope, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Healy, Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. My cousin is a landscape architecture, architect, excuse me, and she solely designs parking lots. That's all she does. So I know that's part of landscape architecture. So, just flat out, are the bicycle racks in lieu of not having any parking?
Our planner will be up to discuss the parking requirements under the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Okay. But the bicycle racks, what was the point of adding them to the project?
Just for convenience of cyclists to park their bicycle.
Okay. Also, I heard you mention with your credentials, the ASLA before, so I'm sure you're aware, but there's a big movement in landscape architecture right now to use landscape design to combat environmental problems like climate change and not add to it. So for, for a lot, that lot that you're building on, that's a few feet from one of our most valuable natural resources, the Atlantic Ocean, sorry, lost my place. I'm curious what was put into the landscape design to not only protect, but enhance our crucial resources that are on and near the building? And the lot?
I apologize. Can you ask me that question again, please?
Sure. Okay, so as I'm sure you're aware, there's a big movement in landscape architecture right now to use landscape design to combat environmental problems like climate change, not add to it. For a lot that's a few feet from one of our most valuable natural resources, I'm curious what was put into the landscape design to not only protect, but enhance our cruc, our crucial resources you're building on and near?
Wow. Climate change. That's a deep one. I, I think, really, this is a very simple...
It's an important one, as for a coastal city.
I, I think it's a very simple landscape design that has no impact either way on climate change, ma'am. Catherine, it's a very small landscape area.
Well, I mean, our, our oceans take up 75% of our planet, so technically, they're in charge of a lot. So what was done to...
You're asking me about the landscape improvements that we're making.
I'm asking what was put into the landscape design to combat environmental problems, not add to them?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, thank you.
Just, just one, just one second before you start. You've already gone once. Anyone else that would like to come up that has not gone up yet? Please, please go first.
Hi, Mr. Bauer. I'm Steve Viviano, 1501 Ocean Avenue. My question for you, when you got the assignment for the landscape of this project, were you told there would be four walls around it, and then they said, do something to landscape it, or was, were the walls part of the landscape idea that you had?
Yeah, the, the vision for this design was by the architect, Mr. Handel, which included the, the overall design aesthetic of the building, the materials, as well as the, the trellis as part of the architectural design.
So when you got the, your assignment, there were walls around a pool, and you were told, do something cool with them, landscape-wise?
Generally, that's correct, yes.
Because when I watch these, you know, insane pool shows on TV, when there's ever a pool next to a beautiful body of water, we're always seeing infinity edges and trying to pull the ocean view into the pool. I, I just, for the life of me, can't figure out, what's the strategy behind a wall? If I'm in the pool, I can't see the ocean. Anything from a landscape point of view? Do you typically design landscape of a pool that has a view of a body of water by putting a wall in front of it? I'm honestly asking...
No, I understand the question, sure. It, it depends on the setting. It depends on the setting. We certainly have infinity-edge pools. We also have private pools that are not, not infinity. We have public pools that are not infinity. We have public pools that are infinity. We've done pools of all kinds of shapes, styles, and designs. Again, this was a vision by Mr. Handel in his office, and we think it's, we, we, we hope that we complement it nicely with the landscape design.
I mean, look, my opinion, you did a great job trying to hide four walls. I just don't understand why you'd put four walls around a pool that's on the ocean. Everything else on the boardwalk is glass. One other question, thank you.
Yes.
When you're inside the pool, laying by the pool, and you look at these walls, you don't see the ivy, right? The ivy's on the other side? What do you see from the inside?
On, on the east side is, are cabanas, right? On the south side is a bar, right? And on the, on the east side and the north side would be the fence and the landscape.
So if I look back west towards that, right, if I look west, will I see the, you'll say, I'll see cabanas, but will I see the wooden wall?
You see cabanas, and some chaise lounges above the cabanas.
And behind that will be a wooden wall?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. When designing landscapes for structures, what's the typical distance that's advisable to put the landscaping as a buffer from the wall? In other words, you don't put landscaping right up against the building, typically. What's the typical distance?
Warner, it all depends on the material of the building. If it's wood, it may be a certain dimension. If it's masonry, it could be a, a different dimension. In this case, planting these, if you're talking about interior?
No, just in general. Like, is it advisable to have a, a planting directly up against a building wall?
You can, sure. You can grow material up a wall, as we did at the Asbury Hotel.
Okay.
Right? We have ivy in Boston, English, we have ivy in Boston, ivy growing directly up the wall.
What's the spacing between this wire grid and the actual wooden?
12 inches.
It's 12 inches?
Yes.
And this particular ivy, it doesn't send out tendrils that seek other paths?
This, this, the Linusris imperverens is a twining vine, so it stays on the cable.
So you're confident it will remain on the wire mesh and not intrude into the building?
It will not adhere to the building.
Okay. Do you think it's really a good idea to plant a insect- attracting plant next to a wall that's essentially an open wall, right? My understanding of this is that the wall on the other side of this wire mesh is actually permeable. It's, it's open, it's wooden slats, correct?
It has shutters that open from your, your cabana. You can open the shutters if you have a cabana.
Okay.
And let air...
Okay. And the flowering component of this vine, is it nectar-producing? You said it attracts hummingbirds and bees.
It, it certainly attracts hummingbirds, yes, and bees. It does, yes.
Okay. Ants, harvester ants, that are nectar gathering, perhaps?
Don't know.
Don't know.
I don't know about that.
Okay. On a different topic, the logo on the building, you had stated that the logo would be three inches, and the address numerals would be two inches?
There's no logo per se. It simply is the copy with the name of, of the facility, Asbury Park Beach Club.
Oh, the name of, the, the name of it, okay.
And 1500 Ocean Avenue.
And specifically then, with regard to the number, two inches high?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there some standard of minimum size for fire department or building code?
I'm not aware of a standard.
Okay, if there were, would you adhere to that?
Certainly.
Okay, if it's three inches, four inches, five inches, whatever it is, right?
If there is a standard for the fire department, we would adhere to that, yes.
Okay. You've heard of the term CPTED, CP-TED?
I do not know what that is.
Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. It deals with using landscape as a deterrent for criminal activity, and I don't want to really make a statement, but I guess I'm going to have to. If something...
A question, you have to make a question, not a statement.
Yeah, I know, I know, but everybody's making, everybody's making statements. Why can't I?
Question, please.
Basically, the height of your plantings will affect the perception of public safety. Is there some other plant you could specify to cover your transformer core that stays lower and not rises up to four feet in height? Since four feet is undesirable from a safety point of view.
We were requested to buffer the transformer.
Right, how high is the transformer?
Probably four feet or higher.
Oh, it is?
Sure.
Interesting. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Warner.
All right, if I could just, okay. All right, I'd like to propose that we take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back in a few moments. We have to make a motion?
Yes. Move to recess for five minutes.
All right.
Second.
We'll be back.
Aye.
All right, ready to go?
We don't have time.
Okay, water in the court.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, let's resume.
Good evening, Barbara Cutler, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I'm not sure if I should address this question to our mayor and council, or to Mr. Bauer, or to the attorney for Asbury Partners. As a grandmother and a registered nurse, I'm very concerned about the impact, the health impact of the propensity of bees with the honeysuckle, which has been validated and acknowledged by all parties tonight. One quick question. When our grandchild, or other visitor, or perhaps someone who's got a pet, gets bitten by one of these bees, to whom do we send the bill from the emergency room, or the urgent care center, or God forbid the acute care hospital? As there clearly would be a case of liability here. Is it the planter's liability, the developer's liability, or the town's liability? To whom do we send those bills? Who's responsible when someone gets hurt?
The questions are for the witness, not for the, Wednesday night's the council meeting. You can come to the council meeting and ask our question. So you can ask the gentleman, you can ask him to answer.
It's food for thought.
Okay.
It's food for the, are you, Mr. Bauer, are you liable, in your experience, have you ever been held liable for something you planted that wasn't there previously, for which the implications were not there previously, if someone was injured, or God forbid, killed?
No.
Because of an atrophatic reaction?
No.
I just feel that that's, that, in my opinion, as an RN who has worked in the insurance industry for 38 years, I think that is something that needs to be considered going forward before we proceed with a honeysuckle environment with its propensity for bees and subsequent injuries.
Good evening, TJ Elliott, 1501 Ocean Avenue. And I appreciate your answering questions. Obviously, this is a project that engenders a great deal of opposition here. So I want to be specific to what you're talking about tonight, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but are you saying that this particular planting is or is not deciduous? Lose its leaves?
Are you specifically referring to the vine, sir?
Yes, sir, the coral honeysuckle.
Yes, it's, it's listed as an evergreen vine in, in the, in the zone just below us. In our zone, it is potentially evergreen, leaning towards semi-evergreen.
Okay. And a second question about this particular vine here. Are you saying that it thrives in a salt environment, or, or survives in a salt environment?
It, it survives in a salt environment, yes.
So I just want to point out, you know, I, I'm not a horticulturalist, and my wife is sitting over there, can certainly attest to that. But if you take a look at the information available through the Florida Native Plant Society, which has been around since 1979, which I have some familiarity with there, in both cases, they go in a different direction. They say this plant is going to be deciduous in our particular locale, and that salt adversely affects this, this plant. So I, I wouldn't know, but I'm just saying that we've already heard varying opinions tonight about what can go on with, with this particular vine.
Okay, thank you. I would just point out that there are numerous types of honeysuckle. Obviously, some are not tolerant, and some are not evergreen, and some are in fact invasive. This one is not.
Yep, based upon what you had there, as nearly as I could see from what was there, the specific page on the Florida Native Plant Society was talking about the same one there. But again, I, I wouldn't have that expertise, but certainly a lot of doubt has been raised tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Beth Stuckey, Deal Lake Drive. In light of the fact that so many people don't feel comfortable with this, or apparently don't feel comfortable with this pool club, and the, the seeming effort to make it exclusive, or it was discussed and brought up, I may have missed this, so you can certainly set me straight if any, I did. What were the other options to the ivy? What were the other things when you were given this task, I know you were a landscape architect, so maybe even prior, but was there anything that would have made it more integral to Asbury Park than this ivy and this honeysuckle that nobody seems to be really happy about? And that's not my expertise either. But were there any, was there any other design that, even if you were going to build the wall, that could have been put on, so that's more, be speaking of Asbury, such as artwork? There's artwork all over the boardwalk. There's artwork all over Asbury, and that's what Asbury's known for. So if this was answered before, I apologize, but was any consideration given to any other design that maybe people might have been happy? I'm not saying they would have been. I didn't canvass anybody tonight, but I'm just asking, what were the other options? Because this one doesn't seem to make anybody who's going to be living here, or looking at it, or walking by it, too excited. Thank you.
To answer, sorry, to answer that question, so Mr. Handel from Handel Architecture was our first witness, who described the process behind the design and design aesthetic. And that, that planning board meeting is available to view on the APTV website.
Was it a process from when we all saw it, when, I forgot, was it, when we had all the displays, I'm sorry, yeah, at the charrette, was it there? there? Was it after that?
No, it was, it was the, Mr. Handel testified at the meeting of the planning board in May, I think it was either May 24th or 29th, I don't recall the exact date. But the first meeting here is where Mr. Handel testified, and he testified at length concerning the design aesthetics.
That was on May 29th? The May 29th?
I was here, I believe, for that meeting, and I don't recall, but I'm wondering who had input and who got to decide that, since there's just so much antagonism or so much dislike about it, who got to make the final decision? Maybe you could just tell me, because I don't know. Who made the final decision about what's...
The client is presenting their application, so they're putting forward the design.
This design?
Yeah.
So it's definitely, I realize now, of course, it's not finalized, so they're still, after hearing everybody, the planning, the planning board can sit and listen to this and go back and consider other options. Thank you.
My name is Steven Levinson, I'm 1501 Ocean Avenue. I've got three different areas that I've got questions for you on, because I have some concerns, besides having concerns about the overall project. The first one has to do with these bicycle racks. The idea of putting out bicycle racks that handle 28 bicycles when you have 10,000 people coming out to the boardwalk and the beaches, doesn't seem to make any sense to me whatsoever. Has any consideration been done, been given to doing something that's actually going to work for a larger number of people?
28 bicycle racks is our proposal.
So 28, you're talking about having 350 to 450 people in your facility, besides the thousands of people that are coming out there on a daily basis? And you think that that is a proper use of space and giving some consideration to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that explains that part of it. The next part has to do with infringing on the boardwalk itself with your planters. Once again, I find myself in the position of wondering why it is that your organization is trying to take over part of the boardwalk. You did the same thing when you took the boardwalk down, and your initial plan was to push the boardwalk out. So again, I take offense to that personally, and that is my statement. But my question has to do with a conversation that we had once before. And that has to do with the growth on the outside of the wall. You're saying three to four years for it to fill in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it three, or is it four?
I can't tell the difference.
Okay, the last time we spoke, you told...
The plant material grows.
The last time we spoke at a meeting, you said it could take up to 10. Is that still true?
That may have been for a different plant. This plant grows seven to 10 feet, as I testified.
So you're going to put your professional reputation on the fact that in three to four years, this wall's going to be fully complete?
I believe so.
Well, no, you either are, you aren't, you don't believe, you don't believe that you're...
No, I believe so.
Okay, so you're putting your professional reputation on that?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the fact that the, the design itself and the appearance is something that virtually everybody that's been talking here finds abhorrent, doesn't seem to have any consideration at all, is that correct?
I think that's more of a statement than a question.
And that's my last question, thank you.
Hi, Ernest Magnoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive. As a landscape expert, is it customary for something so contentious as what we're dealing with here, not to have a model? In other words, the pool, the wall, the plants, a model that we can look at? I mean, we're dealing with flat slides, and it really tells us nothing. So maybe if you prepared a model, we could like, reach in and open the shutter doors and things, and really get a look at what we're dealing with here? And, and see what the plan is to, to kind of, so, where's, is there a model, maybe?
There, there is no model.
Well, I was asking the expert, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm going to answer the legal question here, which is that the planning board has...
It's not a legal question.
It is a legal question.
It's a landscape question.
The legal question is that there is a checklist that the planning board prepares, and that identifies all of the items that are required to be submitted. A 3D model is not an item that is required of this applicant, or any other applicant that comes before the planning board.
That wasn't my question. I says, is it usual? In his field of expertise, when he designs things, do you often get involved with projects where there's no model? That's all, it's not a legal question.
We haven't had a built model in years, given the benefit of a computer model.
So models are no more, they don't exist?
No, they exist.
Well, I spent a lot of time up north, Hoboken, a lot of areas in the city, everything is models, I'm just wondering why here, we're modelless, but, okay, let's leave it. Okay, so the other thing is, was there any consideration to the, that would include the walls, because your neighbor to your right facing the ocean is a sewer plant? Now, I don't know, it's difficult, was there any consideration that you abut a sewer plant in what seems to be an exclusive beach club? Was the wall a landscape consideration, maybe lock out the sewer plant so that the members don't see it?
I don't believe so.
No, but you know there's a sewer plant there?
I understand where the sewer plant is.
Okay. Are you aware from an EPA standpoint? I, I live right there, and I fish there, I'm here 12 years, and I think I know the area pretty well, but are, are you aware that there are lots, lots and lots of EPA problems? As a matter of fact, the Deal Lake has surrounded hazardous, don't eat any fish, that construction on the older buildings is...
That's it. Mr. Bauer has...
It's a question.
Mr. Bauer has not offered any testimony as to interpreting EPA regulations.
Are you, are you aware from a landscape perspective, that there's a lot of pollutants blowing in the ground, in the lake, and I guess you're also aware that fertilizer feeds algae in the lake? That's what Tekinasi Lake has in Long Beach, big problem with the development, the rain washes the fertilizer into the lake, and the algae gets out of control. So you've considered all these things?
I don't, I don't think it has to do with it, my testimony this evening, sir.
Okay, so from the landscape point of view, it, it doesn't concern you?
I'm not addressing EPA issues in the area.
Okay, I, I just can't imagine how you separate landscape plants and things from EPA. I mean, they're, they're one and the same, but, okay, so, anyway. Are you aware that the attorney for the Save the Waterfront is an EPA lawyer?
I have no knowledge of that.
Okay, well, he is. And I just listened to his questioning of you, and from what I know about EPA, I would have asked you a lot tougher questions. So I just want to make that as a statement. So are you, you're, so you're not aware? Okay. It's hard for me to keep it to questions, but I'm trying.
You're, you're doing okay, keep it going.
You're gonna give me a good grade tonight, because I'm...
Keep it moving.
Oh, keep going.
Okay.
Okay. Part of landscape architecture is knowing that you're doing something for a client, and that the client is a neighbor, isn't that correct? In other words, good architecture, landscape makes good neighbors, is that correct?
I don't see how that's a question that Mr. Bauer can answer.
I don't know, I don't know why, I'm not asking legal questions, I'm asking aesthetic questions.
It's a rhetorical question.
There what?
What's the question? What's the real question?
Well, the question is, are, are you aware that landscape architecture sort of impacts the neighbors? And are you aware that, you seem to be, at least from what everyone's saying here and what I'm observing, that you seem to be designing for your client only, and there seems to be a heck of a lot of people that are not happy with your architectural design? So are you aware that neighbors don't seem to be pleased with so far what you're offering? That's a question.
I, I've heard everyone's opinions this evening.
Okay, and I think, you were here when the gentleman said, "Does anyone like this?", and everyone said, "No"?
I didn't hear everyone say no.
Oh, okay. Okay, anyway, okay, so, I, I, I think that's it. But I, I will end with the fact that I, I think the model would have been critical, and I think it still should be, I think, for, for the land... For the landscape part, I think you should have to produce a model, and, and I think that a little bit more outreach. And would you consider a little bit more outreach of your design with the neighbors? Because they're just not happy, and I'm a block away, and I'm not happy, but especially the people with, with the wall, I mean, it's taking away their view, it's devaluing their property. Would you, would you consider an outreach? That's a question.
Mr. Bauer, Mr. Bauer is the landscape architect.
Right.
You're asking policy questions and client questions, and it's not a question that Mr. Bauer can answer.
So you won't meet with the neighbors?
We are here at a public meeting, in a forum for the entire city.
Okay.
We appreciate your question.
I'm not going to keep repeating, because you're a good lawyer, and you just shut me down, so anyway, thank you very much.
Lynn Poyne, 1615 Park Avenue in Asbury Park. My question is about the planters that are on the public boardwalk. And you've explained that we should be cool with that, because they're not taking up any more width than benches, which the city may provide later. You're taking up 64 linear feet of boardwalk, how much space is actually left for a bench? How many benches would we be able to put on our boardwalk?
Just for clarification, the benches are also part of the design that was approved by the city council. It's not just the planters, it's the planters and the benches.
How many benches fit, once you take 64 linear feet from the boardwalk? And I understand you're not taking more depth, and we're supposed to be okay with that, but how many benches can fit between the planters? Once you take 64 feet?
You can fit a lot of benches if you wanted to line them up. You can fit a lot...
A lot? How many?
Well, I think it's 250 linear feet of building minus 64. Where's our mathematician here?
And then I saw that there were light posts in between there, too, so I'm just wondering how they have fit.
That's correct.
So the light, again, the light posts are part of the overall boardwalk design? There are light posts up and down the boardwalk?
Right, I understand that, but I'm wondering how many, how much space is left for public benches?
You could easily locate 20 benches along there if you wanted to.
Okay, that's my question.
Just one moment. Is anybody that has not already come up once, want to come up? Because this is your last chance. Okay, thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. Just two questions. One, it was broached, but I just pulled it up, it says, "Every part of the honeysuckle plant is highly toxic to dogs." Honeysuckles are okay for people to ingest, but highly toxic to, to dogs, which we have a significant amount of dogs in our, our neighborhood. What if a major storm blows the vine apart, and our dogs are ingested? Who is liable? The developer? And can...
I don't think Mr. Bauer can testify.
I want to protect my friend here.
All right, please, please.
But, but number two is, can you guarantee this body and these people here, that this isn't a toxic plant? And it won't hurt our animals?
Our research tells us that it is not toxic.
Okay, but if this is all over the internet, can you give us some scientific background that says it's not? And if we can contradict that, does this board accept that this may be highly toxic to our, our animals?
Can I, can I just say one thing? We've heard this, as a board?
Yeah.
We get it? Do you have another question?
No, I'm just saying...
We get it.
Okay.
We understand.
How are we going to determine whether this, 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 this problem is realistic or not? Do we need to feed you information from toxicologists to, 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 to submit this point to make these changes?
So just for clarification, Mr. Bauer, was this particular species of plant chosen in connection with the board professionals that the board has retained specifically to look at these types of issues?
Yes.
Okay, that's not answering the question, but...
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive. I have a question about the plant, back to the planters. So there's eight, four planters that are eight feet in length and two feet in width, is that correct?
There are, the plan that you saw indicates eight planters. Each of those planters is eight feet in length and two feet in width.
And they sit two feet off of the undulating fence, or...
It's not an undulating fence, it's a straight fence.
A straight fence, but it's the, the...
It has texture to it, yes.
The texture to it, okay. So this past week, we had a little bit of a storm, and walking along the boardwalk, and actually right where the pool, the proposed beach club is going, there was quite a bit of sand that was west of where the boardwalk was. So my question, my concern really is, with those long planters, and the space that they're taking up adjacent, or in front of that, that wall or that fencing, there's going to be a lot of sand that accumulates there. So what, you know, one of the, one of my other questions, actually, back to the planters, what are the planters going to be filled with, in terms of planting material, planting material? And what is the weight of those, of each of those planters?
I don't know the weight offhand, but they, the planters are proposed, as shown on our plans that were submitted, ornamental grasses and perennials.
Okay, so I have planters on my balcony, and, you know, they're relatively small, and they're pretty heavy. So I, I'm, you know, one of my concerns is, we are heading back to rebuilding the boardwalk, and we're going to be placing these very large containers that weigh quite a bit onto the boardwalk for a very long time. So has there been any concern or any thought as to what the long-term effects of these very large, very heavy planters are? Also combined with all of the sand accumulation, which we see, especially in the fall and winter and early spring months? You know, who's going to be addressing that? Is it the city that's going, you've said that the proposed beach club will handle the maintenance of the planter boxes? But who will be handling the sand that's going to accumulate along that whole stretch as, during those months, during the six or nine months of the year, when we experience high sand transfer?
I think we, we'd, we maintain that as well. And understand, that's no different than any other vertical element on the boardwalk where sand accumulates in front of, during a storm. It's common.
But we don't have a vertical element on the boardwalk.
Sure you do.
Well, starting out...
Not spot, but other spots, yeah.
On that stretch, this will be a new vertical element, that whole block.
Immediately to the south of it, there's a vertical building, there are the pavilions. It's not uncommon that sand, sand accumulates, and it's simply, it's simple maintenance to remove the sand.
That particular span, those couple blocks, receive a lot of sand in the wintertime. That's been my experience, I walk there all the time, and it doesn't take a Hurricane Dorian to have that happen, it just happens when we have nor'easter, or the wind's blowing from the north. Along those lines, what is, if we could go back to the, the image of the actual cable that's affixed to the front of the building, the cable and wire that the vine will be growing up?
This one?
The one that showed how it was secured into the side of that one. So again, my, one of my concerns, living close to the ocean and experiencing a lot of wind, not just in the winter months, but all year round, how are those being affixed to that building? So we're talking about a whole block of rigging, of cables and wire, that is affixed to a solid surface? And that is going to be what I believe, and what I've experienced where I live, and I'm a few blocks off the beach, a wind tunnel. So how, how is that affixed to the building?
As is demonstrated here, these brackets are attached to the building.
It's, it's not bolted through the cement and attached, secured on the other side, it's just bracketed onto the side of the building?
It's secured with screws, bolts, whatever you want to call it, to the building, yeah.
And when that vine, or ivy, or whatever is proposed, is it full growth? What is the weight of that, on, on that cabling?
I don't know the weight of it, but this system would support a full-grown vine.
But will it support it in an area that receives high-velocity winds?
Yes.
And do you have examples of other green walls that you've done along the oceanfront where it has sustained those winds? And how might we look at those?
You can look at our website online, some are shown.
All right, thank you.
Polly Shulga, Fifth Avenue. I just wanted to build on the concerns Lisa brought up about pesticides. The suffix "side" means "kill." Lonosera, which is honeysuckle, is really prone to fungus. Some of you may have seen it covered with powdery mildew. Almost every variety is susceptible. Do you know whether this one is an exception? Powdery mildew needs to be treated in order to make the plant look nice. And then very often, it doesn't even work. So fungicide is not something that we'd want to be spraying. How long is this wall? It's really long, the whole wall, 64 feet of... Oh, no, I'm talking about the whole, the wall when it's covered with lonosera. That's, you know, four years from now, it's covered with powdery mildewy-covered honeysuckle that needs to be sprayed constantly to make it look nice, which is going to be dripping off the side of the building, going into the soil, and then flowing. That's not a question, I'm sorry, but is this an exceptional lonosera?
I don't know that it's exceptional, no.
Do you know whether it's susceptible to powdery mildew or any other kind of fungus?
It may be susceptible to fungicide.
So you would have to use a fungicide to keep it looking nice?
It's possible.
And we already know, and you can confirm, that it's possibly going to be deciduous. So we are Zone 7. It is definitely evergreen below Zone 8. So it's probably not going to have a lot of, any green on it at all for six months out of the year. Then it'll start to get green again, then it'll be covered with mildew, which has to be sprayed. Does that sound about right? That's a question, sorry.
We'll have to wait and see.
Oh. Look, I know. It is a fact that honeysuckle is always susceptible, so...
Please, please.
So the concern is for the environment. And, you know, I know that you have stated that you have a concern for the environment, for Asbury Park, for the waterways. This is one way that it could be very adversely affected. And I guess I want to ask you if you are very aware of what this plant may require in terms of maintenance and fungicide.
I don't know how much fungicide treatment it will require.
Sorry, I forget your name, is it Tom again?
I'm sorry?
Is your name Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Tom, you testified where you're from. Do you remember in the beginning?
Where do I live?
Yes, it was in your testimony.
I did not testify where.
Have you visited Asbury Park on the boardwalk during the summer and taken a stroll? Okay, so that's common of you to take a look at the scenery and kind of figure out how, you know, you can fit your landscape architecture into a current environment, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so have you... Have you taken note of the authentic, you know, architecture and murals on our boardwalk? So as children, we're taught, you know, when we come into a sandbox that already has kids playing in it, we're taught to kind of play along with the existing kids that are in the sandbox. It seems to me that your wall has a lot of opposition, so to speak, especially with these honeysuckles. Has there been any thought about maybe involving the local artist community to put some murals to make it a little more authentic and to fit into Asbury Park? To me, it seems that might gain some support of the town.
That was asked, not to my knowledge.
Might be worth considering. Thank you.
Hi, Tom, I just wanted to follow up. Previously, you had said that you guys would be using Boston ivy on the interior, and I just wanted to clarify how that would be used. Is it going to be grown up, the interior walls, on the opposite side of the honeysuckle?
Yes.
Okay, and you're aware then that that is considered an invasive species?
Ivy?
Boston ivy specifically?
I don't think, no, not to my knowledge.
To my knowledge, it is, yeah?
That's fine.
Okay, so you're aware then that it is also known to choke out other plants? And this is a permeable wall, as I understand? How would you be...
It's a contained element on a single wall.
So it wouldn't have any ability to reach any of the other plants and honeysuckle?
I don't believe so.
Going through the permeable wall?
No.
Tom, why not?
It's contained within the area of the beach club. It's not on, it's on the interior, not the exterior.
So it's on the opposite side of the wall where the honeysuckle is, though? On the opposite side of the permeable wall?
See where she's indicating, behind the bar, in that area.
And is that a permeable wall?
A what wall?
A permeable wall?
Permeable?
Yeah.
No.
There's no open airways that you've spoken about on that wall? Okay, so are you aware that Boston ivy does affect air and soil and wildlife in an ecosystem?
I'm sorry, say again?
Are you aware that Boston ivy is known to affect soil quality, air quality, and wildlife in an ecosystem? Specifically? Yeah, to change those qualities, which, you understand an ecosystem, correct?
No, I understand.
Okay, so you know that when you change soil or when you change air, when you introduce a new insect that could be, that each of those changes affects the entire ecosystem, correct?
Boston ivy is a very common plant used in landscape.
It is very common. It's also one that's considered in current time to be problematic and not favorable for use for those reasons.
I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. Would you consider using plants that were not considered invasive?
I'm always open to substituting plant material on all of our projects. We think, in fact, that this is a very good solution for both, all the plant material that we have here is a very appropriate solution.
Do you think that it is important to consider the effects of the plants that you use on our ecosystem?
Yeah, I don't think, the plants that we use in this very simple, minor area is not affecting our ecosystem in any way.
You don't think that's...
No, 20 feet of Boston ivy is not affecting our ecosystem.
You don't believe that the landscaping affects the ecosystem or surrounds? You don't believe that introducing a new insect to the area can affect an ecosystem?
Not at this scale.
Okay, I think most people would probably disagree with that.
That's fine.
And scientifically, that would be disagreed with. Thank you.
What color are we going to use on the walls, the wooden planks?
Can you speak up?
The colors of the wooden planks. You know, what are we going to be looking at? The wooden planks that are going to make up the building, right? What color are we using on them?
I think it's natural wood that we're weathering.
It's going to be natural wood with a bunch of hooks or spikes or one of those little, like staple-looking things?
It's a stainless steel cable system with vines.
So we're going to have like Bob Wire-ish looking kind of stuff?
No, stainless steel cables.
Well, Bob Wire is kind of stainless steel, it's shiny. So we're going to have a bunch of stainless steel wiring surrounding the entire building for about, with the natural wood, for about three to four years that we look about as we grow out the vines. So we're just going to have like a wood in like tinsel covering the building. Is that what we're going to see for four years? Possibility of four years?
Going to see a wood building with stainless steel cables.
The stainless steel cables, are they, you know, decorative? What's the pattern? What kind, what exactly do they look like?
It has a vertical pattern to it.
A vertical texture? So is it going to be attached to the wall in a kind of, you know, appealing kind of way?
Yes.
How is that? What is that going to look like?
Show examples of it graphically.
Can you show an example of how it'll look across the whole wall? And what it'll look like without the vantage, right? What it'll look like for three to four years previous to vantage?
Just so that you know, we have already mentioned that that would be something that would be desirable for us to see. Just so that you know, okay?
I heard you.
Okay, good.
But I, you know, they didn't say the color.
Because you still have some more people behind you.
No, I just want, and also, the length of the whole wall, right? Is how long again? The length of the whole building?
I know we had testimony on that from both Mr. Handel and Mr. Delaney. I believe it was around 200 feet.
Right, roughly 200.
I'm not going to contradict their testimony. Whatever they testified is the right answer.
And then how far out after the four years when it's, you know, supple, the honeysuckle? How far would that come out? The, off the edges of the wall?
I'm sorry, I don't think I understand your question.
So after the 200 feet down, when it's coated with the greenery, how far out would the greenery extend with the spikes off the wall?
The cables are mounted 12 inches off of the wall, as I testified.
And then how far out, again, would the vantage grow out from there? From the 12 inches?
Inches.
Two inches, three inches, four inches, ten? Six inches? Are we trimming it at six? Are there going to be like a set?
We'll maintain it as necessary.
But is there...
It will grow vertically, not horizontally.
Everything grows out. Eventually, especially when it starts to get dense, it's going to, you know, it might be pretty and grow up, but we can't maintain that, it's not going to grow out. We're in that nature.
I testified that it would be maintained.
Is there something that you've seen inside that there's some kind of ordinance or something that will maintain how far out the strawberry can grow from the wall?
No. There's no ordinance on Asbury Park's books concerning how far vines can grow out from a wall.
Or strawberry or planting or something? Nothing? I'm dropping hints, yeah, I'm dropping hints. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Eileen Flynn. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. It's really more a process question. I'm really new to this, so excuse me if I'm being naive. So it sounds like this is a done deal. There's been a lot of important questions tonight raised and issues raised, but it seems like your minds are made up. I haven't heard at all tonight that you'll think about it, you'll consider, maybe this honeysuckle isn't the right thing. Or it's a process question, or maybe you're not allowed to do that, and maybe you will still, I'm an optimist, maybe you will still leave here tonight and say, wow, maybe those people had a point.
What happens, just if I may, through the normal process, that happens is that, that once we go through, all the questions are done, are completed, then all the presentations are completed. There will be a session where everyone is allowed to come in with three minutes of comment, okay? So everybody comes in with three minutes of comment. Public is allowed to do that, and that'll be a different meeting. And then the board considers what they would want as conditions to anything, to any of these presentations. So what we do is we take, we listen to what everyone is saying, and then kind of consider like, well, what conditions would we support as a group? And then there's a vote by the planning board, whether we're in or we're out, that, based on those conditions. So those conditions could be based on anyone that has done any testimony from the beginning of this presentation, beginning, and I don't know how many months we've been doing this, however many months we've been doing this, till the end, there are conditions that we are keeping track of because of comments that you've been making, comments we've been making, and we consider all those things. And then come up with conditions at the end to kind of say, okay, here are our thoughts, okay? So it's, yes, it is a process question, I thank you for asking it, but it's nothing's done.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Gus Irvano's, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I'd like to preface my question with a qualification. Been living in Asbury Park for about three years now, with, in a beautiful building, lovely view of the ocean. During the year, there's a tremendous amount of beautiful breeze and wind that comes in straight from the ocean. I don't notice any breeze or anything coming in from the back of the building. It's all ocean, and it's very nice. My concern is earlier, the question about pesticides and fungicides were brought up, and that is a legitimate concern. Now, before anybody on the board or anyone else tells me I should keep my windows closed, which I should not have to. That entire facade of the building also has a monumental number of intake vents as well. Nobody's in a position here to answer the question, I think. But I would like to ask if precautions can be taken to use something that does not require fungicides or pesticides, because those are toxic and they are carcinogenic. I've done my own research, you're going to have to find your own, by the way. Do your homework before you come to these meetings. You've done a terrible job. But that said, though, I would like our board to work with iStar in the best interest of the taxpayers and the citizens of Asbury, especially the ones up close to that project, so that we're not exposed to potentially cancer-causing chemicals. Sure, even if we closed our windows, which we should not have to, there are ton of vents, intake vents, in the Monterey building, okay? And the rest of the buildings in North Beach, that will be taking in the air that's coming in from the ocean. And it does come in from the ocean all of the time, I promise you. Thank you.
Beth Stuckey, I spoke before. So to add on to that, you said that you could add about, I believe you said 20 benches in between the 64 square feet of the plants? Well, to add on that, I don't know who's going to want to sit on those benches if there's bees and there's pesticides and there's things blowing, because I walk during the winter also, and I walk all year round. And I have a back issue, and I often stop to sit. And that is not going to be my first place to want to sit. So I'm going to sit as far away as I can if I can get to the next bench. And I'm wondering, why are we putting something? I come from a town that had real, like Asbury, very old. My house was over 100 years old when I bought it. And I lived in it for a long time. And when people would come, if they were going to do a tear-down, the ones that chose to put up contemporary, some might think beautiful, some might not, but it doesn't matter, if it didn't fit in the community, nobody wanted to see it. If you want a house like that, you move to a community that has houses like that. So my question is, why put something, and it's been asked before, that is not going to be friendly to the community? And it doesn't sound like this design is. So I'm glad to hear in the planning that this is going to be considered. So that's my question. Why would we put benches where nobody's going to want to sit? Secondly, I'm wondering about the lettering. And I think if you had a slide with the lettering, is that possible to pull that up?
At the front door?
At the front door, yes. You said it's going to be two inches, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. So there's little tiny stores on 71 on the, you know, and I don't know, I mean, I'm not a, I didn't go and measure them, but most stores have lettering much bigger than two inches. And I'm wondering if there's an ADA compliance, I'm not sure if there is or not, for visually impaired people, who's going to be able to read a two-inch sign? And I'm wondering why it's only two inches on a substantial-sized building? And why are you trying to minimize your establishment? And I never heard it, like, two inches looked like nothing, you know? Like, I teach visually impaired people, and two inches is like, forget it. On a building, you know, I don't understand it. So can you explain why you would only put two inches? And how you're going to make it ADA compliant so people can read it?
Yeah, you know, I don't know what the ADA compliant requirement is for letter size, I don't know that, we will research that. But in the past, we've had other projects where there are addresses at that size.
So is the sign on the wall? I'm sorry, or is it above?
It's on the glass, there's glass as part of the entry feature. And it's a vinyl-applied letter upon that glass.
On the glass?
The name of the building is three inches high, and the address is two inches high.
Is it dark-lettered?
It's white-letter, white-letter on the glass.
So it's white-lettered on glass?
On colored glass.
On colored glass.
On colored glass.
Yes. It'll be visible, but you make a good point. We'll check the ADA height, if there is an ADA requirement for height. If it's a little taller, we'd be glad to do that.
And, well, so here's another point along those lines, and I appreciate your willingness to look into it. and I appreciate your willingness to look into it. Even if it does meet it, maybe it could still be bigger anyway, to make it easier, and maybe it doesn't have to be, maybe it could be something that stands out more. I happen to know for a fact, and I don't know the whole population here, but I happen to know of at least one blind person who might, you know, and I'm sure you're gonna braille, because that is ADA compliant, I'm sure you're gonna braille on your building, right? Because you need to label things, or at least I think you do. So, I know there's at least one, and I'm sure there's more than one, and even enough not blind, visually impaired, so I would just like you to take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Madeline Monaco, I was up here previously. I have a couple of questions. One is, previously when I asked about the vine, you'd said you had a lot of experience with oceanfront vines of this type on oceanfront buildings. And then a friend of mine asked how much pesticide or fungicide you would need to use on that expanse of vine, and you said you had no idea. So, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I'm not a landscape contractor, and I don't maintain these projects.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there someone else who will be able to answer that question at some point?
The planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over how much or how little pesticide is used on landscaping once it's installed?
Something didn't hear you.
Sorry?
No. That answers the question, no. There won't be any testimony about the amount of pesticide that may or may not be used on landscaping once it's installed.
Okay, and as I've stated in previous meetings, just because it's not required doesn't mean it's not the responsible thing to do. And I'll leave it at that. Can you bring up the slide where you showed a bar with some foliage around it? I kind of missed that. There's a bar inside there?
On the interior.
On the interior?
This juice bar on the interior.
This is the food and beverage area that Mr. Handel testified to previously.
Okay, so you had another picture of the foliage around that bar?
Of the bar, I don't believe so.
Did you not?
No.
So, so there are gonna be people sitting around this bar drinking what? Are they drinking alcohol?
I don't know.
You don't know if they're drinking alcohol? Will there be a liquor license?
Mr. Bauer is not the appropriate witness to discuss operations. We previously testified that there's currently no liquor license associated with this premises.
Okay, so why is there a bar, then?
There's a food and beverage bar that will serve food and beverage.
Non-alcoholic beverages.
There's a food and beverage bar that'll serve food and beverage.
Okay, so that question is still unresolved, whether or not there'll be alcohol, that's what your answer is telling me.
There's currently no-
Thank you.
Answer, answer.
There's currently no liquor license associated with this premises. If there ever were to be, that is a separate process in front of the city council.
Okay.
Hi, Barb Cutler, 1501 Ocean Avenue. Relevant to the bike racks, you indicated earlier that when someone asked who we thought would use these racks, it would be a combination of the general population as well as perhaps the residents of 1101. I think we could all agree that it's a reasonable assumption that the residents of 1101, having paid millions of dollars for their residence, paying $2,000, $3,000 a month in age-aways, are likely not gonna schlep all their belongings on a bike to go to the beach club. That having been said, Mr. Bauer, you would have no way of knowing-
I don't think that was ever said.
What's that, I'm sorry?
I don't believe that there was any testimony about 1101 at all.
No.
That I recall.
Well, I thought there was testimony that the folks living at the ocean clubs, well, at any rate, at any rate-
It's anybody, anybody in the public.
Who has a membership at that club.
A combination, at any rate, anyone in the public. I said, the general population as well. At any rate, Mr. Bauer, you'd have no way of knowing, no one sitting here would have any way of knowing, the congestion and concerns that currently exist on that part of Ocean Avenue in front of 1501 from a real skateboarding issue. I mean, it's truly, it's truly treacherous.
Please, anything that, anything that this gentleman has testified against?
My question is, in the context of the skateboarding issue and the recent scooter initiative, could, if consideration by the town could be given to relocating those bike racks, oh, perhaps closer to 1101 or some other location, would that be something you would be interested in pursuing in tandem with the town? Is that a possibility, or is the current location of the bike racks solid in stone?
I'm sorry, 1101 has nothing to do with this, so I don't know what they could answer.
Is there a possible alternative location for the bike racks, given the current congestion?
Can I just be clear about something also? Is that whenever there's a site plan that comes up in front of this board, we always request bike racks. We always request as many bike racks as someone can come, can fit. That's just the standard that we do.
And I'm assuming the planner will speak to the requirements. I don't believe there are actually any requirements for bike racks.
Yeah, there are no requirements.
This is just something that is an amenity for the boardwalk.
I'm just wondering, if given the congestion where they're currently going to be located, if consideration should be given to relocating one or more of them?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I'm asking you. Okay. I was gonna wait to the end, but we may not have an end. So, that's, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bauer, and because you said the 28 bike racks, and I think you said they would be for both everybody, but they're on private property. So, is that, that's, are you gonna assure us right now that everybody can use those on private property?
I don't know that Mr. Bauer can answer that.
Okay, so who do I ask? Well, he made the testimony, he said that, so that's why I'm asking the question. So if he wants to withdraw his remarks, I'll say, okay.
Mayor, we'll take that question under advisement, but I don't think Mr. Bauer is in a position to answer it.
Okay, but that was me, okay? No problem. And then something else I'd like to follow up on. The young lady before said you're gonna have braille. There's been no indication of braille, so I don't know why you're assuming that.
I'm assuming it because it's an ADA requirement, but perhaps on public buildings, perhaps not on private spaces. So, I think it would be a friendly thing to do, because it's not a requirement for our blind, our braille-weaving population, and for darker and bigger letters for visually impaired people.
Okay, but I just wanted to let you know there are no plans right now for braille, correct?
I don't think I asked, well, maybe I did, but it's also a question.
Okay, you didn't get an answer, so I'm gonna, is there any braille? Being proposed now?
No, it's not proposed.
Thank you, I just wanted, I just wanted to let you know, thank you.
A question with, if we go back to the picture of all the honeysuckles on the building?
This one?
Yeah. Now, how long, how much honeysuckle is going to be accumulated over the phases of growing in? Like, it's all, almost all around the building, almost, how much is that going to be? If you actually collected it in tonnage, how much would that be?
I don't, I don't think Mr. Bauer can answer. I mean, how many leaves, how many-
How much, you know, how much growth in which amount of time? You wouldn't, you wouldn't know that?
I don't know the tonnage or the volume of the material, no.
Okay, now, so, but you recommended this, and so you couldn't tell me with the amount of growth that's gonna be? And I just read that honeysuckle has a pungent aroma that's very heavy. And with the amount that's being grown, how much is gonna accumulate? And would that accumulation really bring a high amount of bees to that, to that front area because of the attraction to the building?
I don't know that Mr. Bauer can estimate the number of pollinators that will pass by the honeysuckle that's there.
I'm not sure if anybody could.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know that anybody testified about it.
No, I mean, if we know, if we're growing something, if you're growing-
Hold on.
One at a time, please, one at a time.
I just wanted to clarify, this is not private, I'm sorry. But the, this particular honeysuckle actually is not fragrant. This honeysuckle is actually not fragrant. A lot of honeysuckles are, but this one is not particularly fragrant.
It's not particularly? Most varieties say they have a smell to it. And with the amount that's being grown, is that going to be, it's like, you know, and I'm only using this selectively. If I put a bunch of weed plants on there, you're gonna have a nice contact. So, I'm just saying, how much of this pollinated, I mean, honeysuckle, is gonna accumulate to attract bees, which, as a nurse said, could, you know, really detrimentally hurt somebody? And over what amount of time would it be?
I honestly don't know how to answer your question, sir, I apologize.
I mean, do you understand it? You just can't answer.
I don't know where you're going with it. You're talking about volume and tonnage?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what your goal is.
Yeah, I mean, how much is gonna grow? You said it takes four, four years to grow in. How much is going to grow in? That's, so nobody knows.
The entire wall will grow in.
But you don't know how much, okay.
I spoke before, but Ernest Mignoli, so I have four more questions. Four more questions. Have questions. You stated that there are active projects like this around the country. So, what are-
Green wall projects?
These, yes.
Yes, sure.
Similarly, pool, this, working, successful, et cetera.
Sure.
Could you tell me the name, because I wanna research that?
I could get back to you with product examples, yeah.
How will you get back to me?
I mean, I can inform the plan, I can, there, I can-
I'll tell you what, if I give you my-
It's easy to document many green wall projects around the country.
Okay, but I wanna-
We can get that information over to the secretary.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just ask him, if I give you my email, will you email me the situation?
No, 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 I'm making a suggestion of how it can happen.
Okay.
Okay? I'm making a suggestion that that information be provided to our board secretary, and you can give her your email address.
It's difficult to get to the board secretary.
Well, she's right there, so you can give her your email address.
No, I mean, in general, in other words, I can't expedite and just say, sir, would you email me?
No, no, no.
It's part of a public session.
You know, I've been told no before. I can live with a no.
Okay.
There was a question about how people are gonna come and enjoy the wall, flowers, the foliage, everything, and the bike racks. And this weekend, we had October, yeah, we had-
Oyster Fest.
I'm sorry, sorry. And, I don't, I just saw something for the first time. I didn't realize, there are like electric cars that come out of the ocean club, and they jitney the guests and the residents to all these places. So, that's how it's gonna happen, that the per centers of members-
We're not talking about the ocean club.
Okay, oh, gee, horrible thing I said, anyway. The planning board, I have a question. You keep mentioning conditions, conditions, conditions.
Correct.
Right? If there are enough conditions that that can't be negotiated, are we at a point where this whole project could still be mixed?
No decisions have been made yet.
A planning board could deny any application.
Are we at the point where if enough objection and enough public outcry, and there is enough specific examples of why this thing does not fit the community, could that conceivably be enough that when you vote, that it could be a no on this project, and a, it's done?
I can't imagine that you're asking the planning board to prejudge the application before all of the testimony has been submitted. However, I will say that the, this is a permitted use. It is permitted in this location. The planning board will have to take that into account by law. This complies with all bulk requirements. The planning board will have to take that into account by law. And the planning board will have to follow the guidance and the ordinance concerning what is and is not part of a site plan application process.
As well, as well as taking into consideration, a lot of-
Can we answer my question?
I am trying to, I'm trying to. Along with what was just said, the planning board always has taken into account their own thoughts and feelings about a particular site along with public comment. So, everything comes into play.
I'm living here 12 years, and the planning board and zoning board, if you look at the landscape of Asbury, the amount of no's in projects that you've mixed, it's probably zero. As a matter of fact, I'm waiting one day to be here when you wanna put an oil on it.
Is this a comment or a question?
Respectfully, this is far afield from the landscape architect.
Okay, all right, landscape questions?
Okay. So, I'm assuming the ocean club, the Asbury Hotel, this club, are all basically same architect? It doesn't seem like it's a big family, like lawyers and developer, am I correct?
I think that question is far afield from the landscape architect.
It's a landscape question.
Testimony.
Did you, did you have anything to do with the Asbury Hotel landscape? You know, I knew you were gonna, you just couldn't wait, right, Mr. Serpikoff?
Excuse me.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me.
Sir.
Excuse me, I'm the board attorney, and if I think I have something to say, I will say it.
Really?
Yes.
Why is he only talk to me this way?
I don't talk, because you talk to me that way.
Really, 'cause you know what, I actually don't?
Listen, you have questions about the landscape architecture for this particular project?
Can I continue?
Not the ocean club, not the hotel, about this particular-
Testimony.
This particular testimony. You have questions to him about the landscape design for this particular application. That's what you're up there for.
Okay. Would there, in other words, with all this beautiful foliage and landscape that you have, could there ever come a time where, like, the bike racks and the benches and everything may be off limits to us, the residents, and only to the club? Meaning, would we get to sit with the honeysuckle for sure forever? Or is our honeysuckle days numbered? Because you won't let me mention the Asbury Hotel, because that's what they did.
It's not part of the application.
They brought us in with all the foliage, by the pool, says it's open to the public, and two months ago, they said, guess what?
It's not part of the application.
Well, you know what, I'm glad I just pushed my question and comment, because really, you know, this is just a pattern where it's-
This is not a comment, it's a question. If you have a question, ask a question.
Could there come a time where the residents may not be able to enjoy your ivy honeysuckle wall?
It's on the exterior of the building, it's public.
It's public space.
It's exterior.
Madam Chair, what?
It's public space. It's outside, it's exterior, anyone can enjoy the exterior.
Where's the pool, it's closed, is it?
Right there. You're walking right past it.
It's right there?
There it is, there's the sidewalk.
Oh, you mean I could enjoy the honeysuckle outside?
You said honeysuckle.
You're talking about honeysuckle.
Okay, I guess I meant, I guess there'll be more-
The honeysuckle is on the outside.
Wasn't it testified too that the shutters opened from the inside, and you could smell the honeysuckle in the cabbanas? So people are gonna be enjoying the honeysuckle from the inside and the outside. So now, what I'm asking is, is there ever a chance where the residents may not get to enjoy the honeysuckle from the inside?
That's an operational question, that is not, and that is not a question having to do with this Asbury Park.
Listen, but you gotta give me something for trying, right?
No. Done?
I'm done.
Are we done? Okay, next. All right, we have less than five minutes.
I just want clarification, since the mayor so kindly tried to clarify the issue. Mr., is it that, Mr. Bauer? Mr. Bauer, you said that you were going to look into the ADA compliance, but your attorney, I'm sorry, I don't remember names, said that braille is not on the table, so which is it?
I indicated that there's no braille currently proposed on the building. We'll certainly look into it if it is a requirement for private spaces. But there's no braille currently proposed.
Okay, and if it's not required, and you, if it's not required, would you still consider putting it in? Because are you considering the possibility that somebody who's blind might want to join your club?
We will take your question under advisement. I can't answer it, as I sit here right now.
There are blind residents here, they might want to.
Madam Chair, may I just say one thing in response to the board's attorney's word?
Sure.
As you know, you were told by the attorney to the applicant that this is a formal application, and that effectively the board has no choice but to approve it. I just want you to-
I don't think that's what you said. No, you said you have to take it into consideration.
I just want you to know that we believe that there are formal questions, and you'll hear what we put on our case. I just want you to just be aware that one position is another position.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so here we are. All right, at this point, we're hitting the 10 o'clock mark. So, we will have to have the planner come back?
Yes, seeing that there's no further questions from Mr. Bauer, we will have, we'll move on to our next witness at the next hearing and bring Mr. Hughes at that time.
Okay, and that will be, I'm going to need a motion to carry, without further notice, to, what's the date, Arena? October 28th, is that acceptable?
That's correct. We confirmed with Mr. Lieberman that was acceptable to him as well.
Yes?
Did we already say it is?
Find it quick.
Yes, you did. We have an email from your office that the 28th was acceptable.
Okay, so, so I need a motion to carry this?
Motion to carry to October 28th, without further notice.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. One thing, thank you. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate your comments. See you next month.